Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. My name is Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School District Board of Education. The board is thankful you have come out tonight and grateful to have you here. The October 15, 2020 Special Board Meeting of the Red Clay School District to vote on the reopening plan Phase Two is called to order. It is 7:01 PM. This meeting is being held electronically. This meeting is being held electronically. On March 12, 2020, Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of executive branch public bodies, including boards of education, to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference or video conference call. Information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting electronically, was published on October 8, 2020, on the Red Clay School District website, under the Public Notices section. Individuals may participate in this meeting via Zoom conferencing and may speak by having completed the public comment form available and submitting it at least one half hour prior to the start of the meeting. In order to speak, you must have completed and provided the notice electronically along with a complete Zoom name, first and last. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, all devices will be muted unless and until you are recognized to speak. As mentioned, if you are signed up to speak, your Zoom name must be what you put into the public comment form you completed in order to be recognized. School board members are to remain unmuted throughout the meeting. As everyone knows, we are in a pandemic situation and are here tonight to vote on the district's reopening plan Phase Two. During the meeting, Mr. Green will explain the modified plan and just a bit of background. The board and district have received an exceptionally high number of community inquiries, comments, and concerns on the plan. The board and the district have listened, and the plan has been modified several times. The original plan was announced on September 24, and a webinar held on September 30 to address questions and concerns. Concerns were to be emailed to reopening@redclayschools.com. Since the webinar, the reopening@redclayschools.com received and responded to over 429 emails. The board itself has received over 255 emails from individuals, and that number doesn't count any duplicates because some people sent more than one, and we spoke to people, and all of which I tried to respond to. Of those, 94 are in favor of continuing remote-only learning for safety reasons, and 99 demand in-person instruction. 62 requested additional items such as six-week remote start, which we did, questions concerning dividers, cleaning supplies, request for more time to make decisions, more information, and general questions. Red Clay has FAQs that are regularly updated. I know also that many board members and many administrators and principals have held numerous telephone calls and meetings with stakeholders regarding the class. In order to maximize the effectiveness and orderliness of this meeting, we ask the following. We will have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on. Each board member should identify themselves by name prior to speaking, and for everyone concerned, this meeting is being recorded. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and justiciable, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I understand from board members that there are two motions regarding the agenda. So does somebody want to present motions?
I would like to present the first one. This is Dr. Newton, or Faith Newton. The first motion is that the reopening Phase Two presentation be moved ahead of the public comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Casper? Yes, okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Why would we move the presentation? Are we going to do the presentation and then public comment? Or we can do the presentation and then the vote, and then public comment?
No, the presentation, then public comment, then the vote. Okay.
Any other discussion? There seems to be feedback on the line. Okay. Maria, would you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo?
Ashley?
I believe Ms. Sabo is having some connection.
I think she's frozen.
The feedback is coming from.
Ms. Sabo?
She's experiencing connection issues.
So, let me move on. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Ashley? Ms. Sabo? Hello? Yeah, she's, she's...
She's frozen.
She is frozen. Can you hear us, Ms. Sabo?
She just, she just put a clap yes to all panelists.
See that?
Can you see that, Maria?
She said yes for her vote.
Okay, so unanimous vote, motion passes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to make a motion. Due to the significant number of communications that we've received, the large amount of people that have signed up for public comment, I'd like to make a motion that we limit public comment to one minute instead of three. This has been the practice in Legislative Hall when there's been situations, so this is not an uncommon request, but I would like to make a motion, we make public comment one minute instead of three minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Mr. Casper made the motion, and Mr. Wilson seconded. Discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion point. I've been on this school board for seven years. I have never missed a single school board meeting in my life. We have never limited public comment, and I don't think when the community has come out, to the extent that they have come out this evening, and many people have worked on their speeches, regardless of their perspective on the issue, I don't think at the last moment we should make a motion to limit people's public comment. I think democracy in motion is best experienced and realized when people are allotted time to participate in our democratic process. Red Clay has been known for its transparency and for our, even in this situation, for the fact that we have really listened to the community, and I think we do a disservice as board members by saying at the last moment that we're going to limit public comment.
This is Jose Matthews. I would also like to bring up something for discussion.
Well, we have to vote on this first, so is there a comment?
Yes, I have.
Ms. Matthews, okay, go ahead.
I would have to agree with my colleague, Dr. Bohm, and her points. I think that we do need to fully listen to the families and to the communities. I think that their voices have not been heard to the extent that we need to hear them, and I am in full agreement with Dr. Bohm's comments and think that we need to listen tonight to what our families and our constituents have to say. It is our responsibility to represent them and to hear their voices tonight.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to go right back on the records and say I am vehemently opposed to limiting public comment when the public was not told that this was a plan. I didn't even know anyone was going to make a motion about this, and I'm a board member. So if I didn't know, I'm more than convinced that other people didn't know.
Any other comments?
I just...
Yeah, this is Jose Matthews. I would also like, for the minutes, to show that I was not aware that this motion was going to be coming to the table tonight, and I, too, am a board member and was not aware that this was going to be occurring tonight.
So can I ask a question? When Ms. Thompson, you said you were aware that board members were making motions. Were you aware that this motion was going to be raised?
Yes, people let me know that they were going to raise it.
And so how come the rest of the board was not made aware of that information? As the board president, you wouldn't share that information with the rest of your board?
I found out right before the meeting.
I had indicated that I would like to make this motion since it is, it's not unprecedented in terms of it's been done in state legislature before, but due to the amount of emails, and again, we've got emails on both sides, we have a lot of people signed up. You know, in the interest of time, I think many of the people that have emailed are also people that are speaking. I think the emails spoke volumes on both sides. I was just trying to...
And I would agree. We've read all the emails. Kathy has done a Herculean effort of responding to all of them.
Unbelievable.
It is unbelievable. I mean, it's taken her hours, and luckily, she's retired and has had the time to answer for many of us, because there's no way that we could have done all of that, and you've got to give her a lot of credit for that.
Absolutely.
We've read all the emails. We're well aware of what the emails say, and which is why the district, Mr. Green, has done an unbelievable job with his team to make the modifications that they have, and I'd like to hear from that first, but I think that one minute is sufficient at this point, given everything that we've heard and all the input that we've had the last two weeks.
So my second question to Jason Casper would be, how come you didn't share this motion with the rest of the board?
I just logged off from teaching my class moments before I logged into this, so I've been working since 7:00 this morning, and I just finished at just about 7:00 tonight.
There is a group chat message that we've been receiving correspondence from our district all day with all of us on it, so it would have just been as easy to respond to that group chat as it would be to let certain people know, because it seems that multiple people on this board knew that this motion would be introduced, and I just don't think that is transparent, and they may do that at Legislative Hall, but they've never, we've never done it in Red Clay in seven years. Kathy, have, has anyone limited public comment while you've been on the board?
Well, we've changed, we've moved it around at different times, Adriana.
Yes, but my question is, have we ever limited to one minute while you've been on the board?
I was answering the question, so please let me speak when I'm speaking. I know that we moved it around. It used to be at the end of the meeting, then we moved it to the beginning of the meeting. During the inclusion, we didn't have it during the regular school board meeting. We had special, we had other sessions to listen to people, so there have been a lot of different things that have been done with public comment.
Are you finished speaking?
I am now.
So have we ever limited public comment to one minute while you've been on the board?
I've already answered that question.
You didn't answer it. You said we moved it around, which I'm aware of. My question has to do with the time limit on public comment.
And my answer stands as it is, Dr. Bohm.
Which means, so have we made, have we reduced public comment to one minute before? That's my question.
I told you what I know.
So you're not going to answer the question?
I've answered.
I think when people ask and make the demand that we be transparent, that it's important for us to hold ourselves to high standards, and I don't think at the last moment, reducing public comment to one minute, when we're already 14 minutes into our meeting, is an acceptable thing to do for our community.
I would have to agree.
And I would like to say that at one minute, Jason, I think that was great, because I had put something together that because of the overwhelming response and participation in this public, from our public, I felt that to give them an hour, that's all I was willing to give up tonight, an hour, because I've been reading emails, but as Dr. Bohm says, as far as chat, where I'm working at, I can't get anything till I get in the parking lot to head from work at the end of the day. That's how bad it is where I work at, you know, and we can't be on our phones, and we can't be on our laptops and any of that. So I was looking at making a motion for 60 minutes for public comment. I think we, Mr. Green and the staff has done outstanding work to put all this together, and we've heard from the teachers, the parents, and yes, I will go for one minute. I think that would be great. We have, how many people are supposed to speak right now?
I think we're up to 103.
I think it's 100 now, Faith.
All right, so there you go. So I'm all for it. That's why I made it.
It's going to take at least two hours at the rate we're going.
Yes.
Easily.
Easily.
Okay, any other discussion? Yep. Roll call vote, please, Maria. Hello, Maria?
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Was that for the one minute?
Yes, please.
Okay. We're trying to get Ashley back in, her connection. Can you hold on one second?
Sure.
Do we want to start with the presentation and come back and do the vote afterwards?
Why don't we just wait and see if it takes just a minute, Faith?
Okay.
Then we're not moving everything all the time.
Ashley just texted me. She says, "I'm in, but I think I'm just a regular attendee."
That's what I got back from her as well.
I think she needs to sign in as a panelist for the webinar, not just a regular Zoom meeting.
And then somebody...
Yeah, I think I have her. Hold on a second.
Moved in an account named Ashley. I'm not sure that's...
I just asked her, that's her. Oh my God. I don't think that's her. That's not her, Tony.
Is she in at all?
Ashley? Ashley's in, and...
I see an Ashley coming in.
Yeah, but she just, they're not responding.
Well, yeah, I'm a parent. I'm not a part of a board member.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's what we were trying to find out. Thank you.
Can someone call her?
I'm going to call her right now.
Well, in all the time we're spending waiting...
Okay, we got to look for Lucy. We got to look for, she says she's in as a Lucy now.
If all the time we're spending on technical difficulties, we could actually be letting our public speak.
There she is right now.
Okay, I'm here.
All right.
Okay, I heard everything, just like couldn't speak because I was a panel, I was a participant.
All right, so roll call vote, please, Maria.
Okay. Dr. Bohm?
No.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
No.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So it's five yes, two no, motion carries.
Okay, now we move on to public comment. Oh, excuse me, one more thing before that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So move.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Maria, please do a roll call vote.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now we do move on to public comment, and again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts.
Madam President.
Madam, we...
The...
Presentation.
The agenda was modified.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got it all, you're right. Sorry, I'm reading it. Sorry, you're right. Thank you. Mr. Green, you're on. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, members of the public community, our staff. We do apologize for the technical difficulties and any shortcomings that you may feel coming as a result of this meeting, but we are here this evening to share with you the updates as it relates to our Phase Two reopening. As has been expressed, we've received hundreds, if not close to thousands, of communication through email form, going to the reopening of redclayschools.com, specifically to our board members, administration, and staff, and we value that input. I personally value that input as we continue to make decisions on behalf of the 16,000-plus families throughout Red Clay. We understand that the decisions that we have to make aren't ideal as we continue to navigate our way through this pandemic, taking into account federal guidance from the CDC, local guidance, plans from the state as it relates to Delaware Department of Education, modifications from the governor's office, and then ultimately, the health and safety guidance that we receive from Delaware Department of Health. And so we find ourselves here this evening at this special board meeting, not only to share information, but continue to engage our community so that we can provide and live up to our mission and vision of providing adequate resources in as equitable fashion as we can to our diverse school community. And so just some recent developments. As everyone knows, on September 25, we released the Phase Two reopening plan, which we got a lot of feedback, obviously, on the short timeframe in which parents and families had to make their selection, and then also concerns around the remote option that we had proposed as it related to accelerate education and really trying to find the means to balance and provide support to our school community. So in hearing that, we extended the deadline to the ninth, and over that course of that process, our team worked together with our school-level administration and staff to really figure out the best way to go about not only honoring the remote learning platform that our community has become accustomed to over this first six weeks, but more importantly, supporting the way that our staff members have really transitioned and put brick and mortar learning in place in a remote learning environment. Again, not only a superintendent, but as a parent, I have to take my hat off to the tireless amount of hours and time that our teaching staff and building-level administration has put into making remote learning via Zoom a major success to the point that when we proposed an alternative, we heard loud and clear from our community that that wasn't the alternative that they were looking for, and so that forced us to go back to the drawing board to some degree and modify our plan. And with that being said, we adjusted our K-5 plan as families continued to make their choice with the phase in reopening, and since then, as of yesterday evening, we've also updated and modified our sixth through 12th grade plan to go and reflect more of a hybrid model. Even with that being said, we know that there are a lot of questions that still continue to loom as it relates to the health, safety, and well-being of our community, as it relates to reopening, but more importantly, the ongoing supports that our families have identified that they would like to have in a remote learning environment. And so again, from a staffing perspective, we have to be mindful that the governor's state of emergency order encourages working from home and continue to offer a remote learning environment as it relates to the phase reopening. We're still in the yellow phase scenario of the state's reopening guidance, which offers in-person, remote, and a hybrid fashion of school and schooling for districts, both public and charter throughout the state of Delaware. And so as we continue to not only roll out a plan, an instructional plan, we continue to work with our staff. As we receive ADA accommodations and requests from staff members, we continue to update our new district guidelines as it relates to, you know, processes that we receive from the state, and as of the date, we've had 82 teachers in pairs who have been approved for teleworking so far, and we have approximately about 15 and 20 requests coming in per day. And so just as we look at the various plans and the supports that we have to put in place, I think the community should be aware of the context by which we put supports in place based on the available staffing and support that we have to have. Next slide, please. Next one. And so a lot of the questions that we've received, especially from our staff, which was questions around personal protective equipment, and this is just a snapshot of the PPE that we continue to receive as a district, both through a partnership with the state and working with DEMA, but as well as what we're ordering internally as a district to ensure that we have the adequate personal protective equipment for all of our schools throughout the district. That personal protective equipment includes upwards of 20,000-plus medical-grade masks for employees who work with students who cannot wear masks, 21,600 pairs of gloves, 12,000 isolation gowns for school nurses, health staff, pairs, and custodial staff and other employees. It's, before we move on, it's key to note that, again, the medical-grade masks are for any employee who's working with students who cannot wear masks. We have a lot of specialized programs, our early years program, as well as, you know, our autism program, where we have over 20 different satellite sites, our Meadowwood program. I think the unique nature of Red Clay and one of our points of pride is the fact that we offer a diverse offering of program, specialized services and programs, and so we have adequate PPE to meet that need for our staff members who work, again, with vulnerable populations or students who may need that, and again, additional PPE on hand for staff members who may need additional personal protective equipment as well. Gloves are for employees such as school nurses, health staff, pairs, and then providing direct assistance to students who require tasks that involve, you know, bodily fluids, toileting, feeding, and again, for our custodial staff, and then isolation gowns are for employees, again, who support that same student demographic. In addition to that, we have about 2,500-plus face shields for employees, again, who work with students who cannot wear masks, for our school nurses, staff, and pairs, and then the N95-grade masks are for our healthcare, health professionals, again, which are our school nurses. And one of the things that came into question that I know, there was a lot of questions on and around, was the fact that when we have students who are in person, you know, scheduling things such as hydration breaks and mask breaks, and those mask breaks will only be permissible when there's greater than six feet of social distancing, again, in an environment where you can honor additional six feet worth of social distance and be scheduled within a routine process for students who may have or experience difficulties. Next one. So we also have covered trash receptacles for all schools for proper PPE disposal, and again, all of our school nurses have been trained on the proper use and distribution personal protective equipment. In addition, Red Clay, while all school districts are required to have what we call isolation rooms, we carefully design new holding areas at our schools. These areas are separate spaces from the nurse's office for students or those who may exhibit signs or symptoms of any illness during the school day. We have proper ventilation in those particular areas to help keep everyone safe, including the symptomatic student or other staff, school nurse, or other people who may be displaying symptoms, but then also, those particular areas are also equipped with 40 filtration devices, so helper filters and filtration devices are a part of all of those isolation rooms. We received lots of questions with regards to our HVAC systems and units. All of our systems and units were recommissioned over the summer. Again, recognizing the most common form of transmission through, is through person-to-person contact. So in all of our classrooms, the air is circulated one, four hours before any student would arrive in the building. And that's good to note because on a traditional staff, we weren't dealing with this pandemic. Those times would cycle as the buildings would open. And so again, to cycle the air to make sure that we have proper airflow in our schools, classroom airflow will circulate four hours before. Classroom airs, again, are filtered at least four times in each hour, so within those classrooms, not only are we doing it four hours before school would start or students would arrive, four times within an hour, that classroom air is being filtered and circled and cycled, and we're pulling in up to 30% more fresh air while students are in class. We've upgraded our filters also, which will be routinely checked, and all of our HVAC systems and settings have been independently verified by third party. In addition to HVAC, PPE, we have upwards of 10,000-plus posters and signs about physical distancing, hand washing, how to wear masks, and more of the latest guidance, 10,000-plus decals promoting physical distancing, hallways, classrooms, cafeterias, lunch tables, on our school buses and other spaces, new wall banners and toolkits for schools to promote health and safety guidelines. With regards to cleaning and sanitizing, our custodians receive special training. Four custodians and additional hours are made available, again, to ensure that our buildings, especially those surfaces which are deemed high-touch surface areas, are routinely wiped down. I know particularly in my office, almost every 15 minutes on the hour or so, we have those high-touch surfaces such as doorknobs and railings, and those things where, again, you have high-touch are being wiped down, and we're following and adhering to all the requirements set by the Delaware Department of Education. And all of our classrooms, as well as strategic areas, we've had new hand sanitizer stations placed and distributed throughout all of our schools in Red Clay. And because our custodians, again, do not enter classrooms during the course of the day, again, while they are continuing to clean those high-touch areas and large areas within the school, again, each classroom has been outfitted with personal hand sanitizer station. Our bus seats will be wiped down between every run. And as you can see in this picture, which is kind of small, you see stickers actually on the seat, which demonstrates social distancing and how we have to stagger the seating on our school buses as it relates to the recommended guidance that we've received from the state. Some questions came up about our eco-friendly cleaning products and things, and so we have safety data sheets that are in front offices. Were used for any undiluted concentrated products, they're safely stored in designated areas. And in those secure areas, they're limited to access by staff. So we do have eco-friendly chemicals that have been provided that are actually diluted. While I know it presented a lot of questions on behalf of our staff as it relates to those chemicals with the warnings, and it would be no different than any other warning label that you would have when you're dealing with cleaning products. But the chemicals that are within the classrooms that have been provided for staff who would choose to use them are diluted, so they're not undiluted or concentrated products. Those products are kept away and again, in secure locations and only have access from our custodial staff. And so our school health professionals, that being our school nurses, receive special training at all of our schools. The new professional development on policies and procedures for treating students during the COVID-19 are in line with the latest guidance for the CDC, the Department of Health, and American Academy of Pediatrics. Our nurses develop education materials for training for our teachers, for admin, for pairs, and other school staff on important protocols, PPE, and more. And so just a shout out to our school nurses, in particular, our lead nurse, Mandy Pennington, excuse me, who's been very instrumental in providing us with up-to-date guidance, but interpretation of guidance, and not only that, serving as a support and liaison with the Department of Health and other school nurses across the state. Our school nurses have received COVID contact tracing training, so school nurses are completing a highly-rated contact tracing course provided by Johns Hopkins University as well. And as it relates to that training, again, contact tracing is critically important. It's an important tool in pandemic responses. As we know, you know, those positive cases will pop up and determining, you know, who has been in contact with who, how that contact tracing works, again, will be incorporated in terms of how our nurses will work with the Department of Health and the epidemiologists should we encounter any potential risk within any of our schools. In addition, families are asked to complete safety checks and screening for parents, again, and that's every morning before you send your child to school or to the bus stop, checking for those signs of illness, again, looking for sore throats and different things, and this is a critical need as we talk about screening from parents. Understanding that, you know, traditionally, if your child is indicating that they're not feeling well, and the notion in being a parent and knowing and being an educator, that it's, well, go to school and see if you feel better and have someone call. Those are risks unfortunately that we don't want to take and we could ill afford to take. So it really behooves us for those who have selected in-person to do those safety checks each morning and ensure that if your child is displaying any of those signs and/or symptoms, to keep them home and follow the health protocols that have been outlined. And again, over 2,000 wall-mounted hand sanitizer stations in all of our classrooms, new soap dispensers and upgraded foaming soap, which is antibacterial, is in all elementary, middle school bathrooms, and our high schools are underway of getting those put in place. And we have 110 portable hand sanitizing stations in entrances and exits in all of our buildings. Even on our school buses, we have 145 hand sanitizer stations on our school buses, and also this year, 15,000 lanyards and ID badge holders for students for contactless check-ins on school buses, cafeteria purchases, and also for library book borrowing, book borrowing, excuse me. So in those instances, students will be able to board the school bus to check in, not only there, but in cafeterias, without having the need to touch key cards or punch-in systems. Those badges and lanyards will read and register that that student has purchased their lunch, or more importantly, has checked in on the bus properly. So the question of three feet of social distance, we know it's a point of contention and confusion in our community. This is the actual minimum distance that the state is requiring for in-person or hybrid learning. But we're feasible, monitoring six feet, and so this example is of a room where the social distancing itself was right around four feet, six inches. And looking at how the room was configured, and we can go to the next slide, really looking at base space in our buildings and really managing and maintaining capacity, switching the students who were in that particular room to a much larger room, increased that social distancing space to five feet, seven inches of social distancing, exceeding the minimum by 67%. But even in that case as well, the students who were transitioned to the other room ended up with six feet, eight inches of social distancing space. So really looking at capacity, looking at the percentage of families who have made the choice, how we balance classrooms out, and it's one thing to note too, that the actual square footage of a school is not measured in the same capacity as restaurants and things that I think many might be accustomed to when you hear 30% capacity at a restaurant, 60% per cap capacity at a restaurant. Those requirements don't in essence really align with schools in terms of how that square footage is aligned. And so we are adhering to that six minimum, but more importantly, looking at again, how we balance that out. And so a typical classroom in this school had about 12 students, so the average social distancing for them would actually be anywhere between seven feet, you know, 10 inches of social distancing space. So we're continuing to work with schools based on the responses that we've had to help configure that space to ensure that we are not just adhering to the minimum, but more importantly, we're providing the necessary social distance. And again, that three foot is a three-foot minimum with a mask. But obviously, again, looking at these charts, and these are actual schools, really looking at the in-person responses, looking at ways, again, where we can expand upon that social distance requirement. And what does this mean about students and eating? And as that relates to, you know, the we're using the strictest guidelines, and again, whether students eat in the cafeteria classroom or outside a location, they will need to be at least six feet apart, again, because they're required to eat without a mask on. And so that's six feet eating is required without a, without a mask. So again, you have to have a minimum of six feet social distance when it comes to feeding or eating at schools. And what is a safe capacity for my child's school? And just as a point of note, to date, we've had 83% respondents, about 13,285 families have already responded to their choice. 35% of the respondents have chosen online. And again, we're continuing to look at those schools who have pressure, especially at the elementary level where we've had more families select in-person learning. And so we have five elementary schools with a capacity over 50% and two are over 60, and then one is at about 71%. And so at our elementary schools, the average capacity is about 41% of the student population. At our secondary building, as a result of going, because many of our secondary schools had high interest in in-person learning, and we also know based on the health requirements and those who are more likely to spread and at a risk of spreading, it's our middle and high school students. That's one of the major reasons and changes to a cohort model, which also allows us to maximize space. So at our secondary schools, the average capacity is about 21%, and that ranges from 13 to 32. And so when you look at splitting those in half who have selected in-person, it allows for more social distancing, again, for those students at the middle and high school level. And again, this is based on the AB secondary cohort. And so Red Clay on campus, again, looking at 83% response rate right now with 35% of those who responded wanting online. We've modified that, again, at the elementary level, hearing that our families wanted a more robust, robust, remote learning platform, similar to the current Zoom platform. And so for grades K to five, Red Clay on campus students will return, attend school in-person four days a week. And so that campus model looks like in-person learning on Monday, Tuesday, asynchronous learning opportunities and student supports, and that will be an opportunity for our staff, especially related related services and other staff members to provide additional support. And then again, in-person learning on Thursday and Friday. And elementary students will start on November 9th, following the transition week. And a disclaimer to students in special programs, again, we're looking at a third of those buildings during that transition week, but we also need to be mindful that there is a disclaimer for special programs who actually begin on Monday to 19th. As for our early years program, our Meadowwood and Autism Sites will begin on the 19th, and that again, that's a part of our phased-in reopening. And really, again, trying to meet the diverse needs of our school community. And then for grades six to 12, Red Clay on campus, students will attend in-person two days a week in an AB cohort, in two cohorts. And again, a disclaimer again, for those students who are in special programs are in a different model, but for those who are in cohort one, they're in-person on Monday and Tuesday. There will be async student support on that Wednesday, and again, that's giving opportunity for related services and other supports within the schools on that Wednesday, and then on a Thursday, Friday, those students will Zoom into their class. And I know there's been a lot of questions as to why didn't we do this to begin with? I think as a district, we were over ambitious and really trying to provide as much in-person learning as possible while creating controlled environments with all of the health standards and guidelines that I've previously just discussed. But with the overwhelming number of families that wanted in-person, and again, with the students who are within that age demographic, and then more importantly, our technology department really analyzing bandwidth with half in a cohort model really allowing us to, and here, community, and many wanted to continue with the Zoom option as accelerate education wasn't sufficient. We heard our community, we responded, and still now we're going to a webcam format, which I know many schools who are already in a hybrid format are using. And so thank you to our technology department for analyzing data, for securing resources, and ensuring that we could transition to this model and again, to our community. You know, as we continue to try to find a plan and supports for our diverse student and family needs, working with us and showing us grace. I know the angst and anxiety, again, that it continues to create as we adjust, but we're adjusting as a result of hearing our community and trying to respond to those community needs, again, just being the largest school district, but also the most diverse school district. We have a population of about 13% of our student population are English learners when we have, again, the unique programming, and also being mindful that no other district has the offerings that we have with two magnet programs, three out of our five high schools are sixth through 12th grade. And so there are a lot of dynamics that go into play that I would say are neighboring districts, whether you're private parochial or public or charter, don't in essence have to contend with as it relates to, you know, the logistical things that we have here in Red Clay. And obviously, I think there are banner programs, and we promote and celebrate them in a non-pandemic environment, but when you have to adjust and really provide and figure out how to do remote learning in a visual performing arts school. And so we are looking at how we diversify that remote experience and really, again, using webcam formats. Thank you to our technology department for that. And again, I just spoke to much of what that looks like in a Red Clay online environment. And so for our elementary students, Red Clay online is similar and will be similar to what students currently have now, and their instruction will be provided by a Red Clay teacher. Again, we have also allowed accelerate education to remain an option for those families who felt that that best meets their child's needs. And again, at secondary level, Red Clay online will be similar, again, to what you have now and instruction provided by Red Clay teacher via Zoom. And as I indicated, accelerate, or for all students, accelerate education remains an option for online learning. I believe as of yesterday, we had about 45 to 50 families who continue to use that as an option, which I guess is a clear indication. As we've talked about and discussed, a robust remote learning platform wasn't sufficient for our community, and again, we responded to hearing that need and adjusted and pivoted accordingly. And that's not without its angst, it's not without its concerns, again, but it's something that I think as a community, we have to realize the situation and circumstances that we all find ourselves in. And as a district, we're continuing, again, to hear from our community, to listen to our community, and to adjust accordingly. And it's not easy on our educators, it's not easy on our administration, it's not easy on our families, and more importantly, it's not easy on our students. And so we've pivoted, we've planned, we've strategized to try to put as many resources in place to meet, again, the diverse needs of our stakeholders throughout Red Clay. And so that kind of concludes the general presentation that I And so that that kind of concludes the general presentation that I had. I will allow any opportunities for board members. Any questions that you may have on me before we go into public comment.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Green? I have a, I have a couple, Mr. Green. If hearing none from anyone else. So. Could you please again explain your charts 28 and 29? Because I'm not sure I fully understood them. That's one question. Then the other one I want to talk about is DPH guidance. I'm not sure I fully understood the, this chart and the next one. You're on mute, Mr. Green.
It's looking at the. Capacity per se based on the selection. So when we look at how we deem capacity and really looking at a. Seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy, thirty threshold at our elementary schools, the average capacity based on the responses for in-person. It has a set of capacity of about 41%.
And there's, there's several that are over that. So what, what do we, what are we going to do there?
We continue to adhere to the social distance guidelines. Again, our buildings. Allow us to, you know, again, have whether that would be a minimum. Or, you know, preferably the, the, the six feet social distance. And that's why I discussed when we looked at how. We maximize space, how we use the one example of flip-flopping a classroom. That had a larger response of those who wanted in person by putting that group in a larger room versus. Those who may have been in a generally smaller room.
So in those schools, I'm sorry. So in those schools, we're looking at the space to try to make use of all the space so that we can increase the capacity?
No, we're looking at the space so that we can adhere to sufficient social distancing and I just honor those who selected in person. So again, swapping that classroom created. Additional capacity to social distance within that particular room when that one class was in a smaller room.
Right. Okay, okay. And then could you? Explain a little bit about DPH guidance and how we're getting DPH guidance, Mr. Green?
DPH guidance rolls in. It's, it's an evolution as the Department of Health interprets, you know, updated CDC guidance. And so we receive that through a number of, of means and ways. Obviously through. Governors orders, through our liaisons and collaboration with DPH. And then ultimately on updated guidelines or guidelines that they release. One notable one, I would say, is my healthiest communities as we look at rates. Of COVID throughout the state. And I know. Two weeks or a week or two ago, we were monitoring the percent persons positive in terms of the gating criteria. The state has since added an additional metric, which is the percent positive test. Which is a, you know, a factor in math when you look at, you know, numerator, denominator. And that. The state wasn't calculating its percentage as were our neighboring states. So they were just counting percent persons positive and not necessarily positive tests. So for anyone who have, who has taken multiple tests and those tests may have been negative. The state in essence was just counting the individual ones for that positive test, which. If you go to myhealthiestcommunities.com, you'll see a new metric where they now have. A percent, percent test positive. Which puts a percentage of around, right around 2.6%, I believe was the latest as of October 11th. Which technically, if you look at the gating criteria, will put the state under, put it in the green category. But as they indicated at the Tuesday's press conference, we're still in the yellow phase. Of the state's reopening guidelines, which constitutes. Some hybrid form where that will be remote. In person or again, a hybrid fashion. And in Red Clay, based on its latest iterations of our plan. We have components of all with our secondary schools being more in a traditional cohort hybrid model. We're still offering remote to those families who choose remote. And then more importantly, offering in-person learning. And a four-day-a-week model for our elementary schools. So the DPH guidance, it, it, it comes in again, many different forms of fashion. We do have. A designated Department of Health liaison that works specifically with not only Red Clay. But all of the other Newcastle County School Districts and a few charters. And that liaison, as we have questions around guidance or questions and concerns as it relates to the health and safety. That person has been. You know, a direct point of contact for us to field questions through the Department of Health.
Thank you.
I have some questions. Are you finished, Kathy?
Yes, go right ahead.
So first of all, I just wanted to acknowledge all of the community feedback that we've received as we've worked on the district plan to move back. To school. And I wanted to thank the community for speaking, sending letters, even creating protest, different. Different protest movements, having collaborative sessions, Facebook groups, et cetera. The community has turned their silence into speech and action. And I think those are necessary ingredients that people use when they want to create plans. That are more satisfactory than less satisfactory. So I applaud the community for all of their feedback, regardless of their perspective. There were over, there were hundreds of emails I tried to respond to. I think I responded to close to 200 of them. If I missed some of them, I apologize. But I do have some questions that I'd like to ask. If we could go back to slide 28, that capacity slide. I had a question there. So could you tell us Superintendent Green, which schools are over 50%? The two that are at 60 and which ones at 71?
And I'll generally say, I know the pressure and at Cab Callaway was a school where we had a lot of pressure for in-person. Brandywine Springs was a school where we had a lot of pressure. Cook Elementary, I believe, right now we have the highest rate of. Pressure for in-person learning. And then North Star. Was the other building that, you know, when we looked at. Pressure, our elementary schools, especially in some of the lower grades, class sizes are meaningful. But again, I think. North Star Cook, Brandywine Springs. Cab Conrad and HB DePont was another building where we had more in-person requests. And again, going to an AB cohort model. For secondary helped alleviate some of that pressure at the secondary level. And I think Cook right now is the one school that sits at the, at the outlier at, at 71%.
All right, thank you. Can you tell us, for the elementary schools? Can you tell us how many students you think would be in the average classroom?
And while I don't know that offhand, again, when we have the number of elementary schools that we have and especially looking at where the, some of the response rates have been. Again, class sizes aren't equal across. So in terms of what the average class size would be. It probably would be more apt that I can give it to you. And I'll make sure the board has it, but to speak, generally speaking, in terms of what that average would be, will be based on. Again, the responses for those who selected in person versus those who selected to stay remote and it's dependent upon, it's school dependent.
Okay. Is there any way that the class size could exceed the traditional class size that we've experienced in previous years?
No.
There's no way that can happen?
So when you say exceed the. We wouldn't put more students in a classroom during a pandemic than we do it would in a normal year.
Okay, even with the number, I think you said 100, did you say 165 teachers had asked to work remote? What was that number?
That doesn't mean they all get that request. That's, those are just requests for ADA. So that's a process that they go through with HR.
Okay, so 165 educators have asked to, to be able to work remotely. We are not sure what the numbers actually will be. But with fewer educators in the classroom. Even taking into consideration the fact that some students will stay at home and remain at home. There will, I just want to make sure that there's no way that our class sizes.
We will not double up classes as a result. If the teachers are remote, especially at the secondary level. Capacity to zoom into the classroom to still teach versus zooming out from the classroom to teach as well. So. Again, at the secondary level, they have the capacity to work remotely. So there still would be remote teachers, but we wouldn't in essence double up a classroom and increase class sizes because a teacher. Is out. We would either depending on whether they leave, have a long-term sub or other means to be able to support.
Oh, could you talk a little bit about what those other means would be? Because I know that historically for the seven years I've been on the board. That we've had a tremendous amount of difficulty often getting subs in a non-pandemic state. So I'm just a little concerned about our ability to access substitute teachers, long-term or short, short-term, especially now that we're, we're in a pandemic. So if you could just flesh out for me a little bit, what those other means would be, that would be so awesome.
And again, so we're still working with ESS, our subservice provider. We're working with at the building level. And as we continue to go through looking at staffing. To determine, again, I know some of our schools are, are using. You know, other supports in terms of certified teachers who might be in a reading specialist position to. You know, take, it's all hands-on deck proposition as we look and go into a hybrid fashion. Really looking at instructional aids, we're also would soon have a posting for long-term subs in that position. And so it's a variety of ways where we would look to cover particular classrooms. But again, if, if a teacher would receive ADA. Accommodations, one, we would have to see how we would be able to sufficiently meet those accommodations. So it doesn't necessarily default them too remote. We could also provide accommodations within the conditions or the work environment. So it doesn't necessarily exclude them from teaching in person. We would have to have reasonable accommodations to support them. So again, our HR department continues to work through that, looking at the balance in terms of where the numbers are at each school to address that staffing capacity.
All right, thank you. And is there any way that specials teachers? If we have a reduced number of educators who are actually in the classroom, is there any way those special teachers may be taken out of their specials assignments and placed in the classroom? Would that, could that possibly or conceivably have an impact on? The specials that students are able to access? Community that doesn't know when I say specials, our specials teachers, our, our art teachers, our librarians, our phys ed teachers, et cetera.
And so right now in our proposal, especially at the elementary level is cohorting our students. Because our unified arts teachers would in essence. See a higher rate of students. So by cohorting them, we kind of have more of a controlled environment at a three-week interval. And so those, you know, staff members would still be providing related art services. It would just be in a cohorting model.
Okay. And another question I had is. I know at the secondary level, there will be. You know, there'll be Zoom on, certain students would be zooming in and other students will be in the classroom. Is there any way that we could have people in the classrooms that, that would be able to help with the technological needs that educators may experience? And I know we have over a thousand classrooms, but for an educator to teach their traditional class and manage and navigate. Students regularly. You know, is sometimes havoc producing? And now that we're in a pandemic and there are all of these additional. Things that educators will have to be concerned about in the classroom. Especially at the secondary level where we know students once in a while like to sort of challenge authority. For them to manage their traditional classroom in the pandemic and then also have to. Deal with Zoom issues or whatever platform we decide to use. Is there some way they could get some help there? I'm a little concerned with the. Case load of educators.
And again, we have building techs, we have our technology department who will work closely with our schools. And, and literally this is more of a webcam format. So our educators are getting webcams so that students would just zoom into the classroom to be, to access that instruction. Go ahead. No, so when you say have a tech per classroom, I, I, one, I don't know where we would get a tech to have someone in a classroom for each teacher. But again, those supports in terms of tech supports, our technology department. Is extremely responsive to the tech needs within our buildings. And then there's tech support within each of our schools. That can be tapped to support teachers in a holistic school environment to address any tech needs that may come up. I think what you might be getting to is the, the instructional balance between. Where the educator might be supporting those who are online versus those who are in person. And again, from an instructional model, we'll continue to work with our schools and make sure that the teachers have the adequate support to be able to address that.
And in our schools, when you say we have tech help, about how many actual people are you referring to?
I couldn't quote or give you a quote offhand in terms of how many. Techs of tech supports where we would have in our buildings. And that again, may differ depending on school.
But could you give me like a ballpark figure? Like, is it like three or 15 or 45?
And again, I generally can't give you a quote in terms of, I, I don't know that offhand, so I'm not gonna.
Okay, that's fine. And do you know how many people are in our district tech support office? I'm just trying to wrap my head around, we have, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of students, like what that ratio sort of looks like.
I would generally say. In our tech department, so to speak, including employees and contractors, I think we have about 20.
And they service the entire district?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had had to do with the distancing and the social distancing. And I know you and I have talked about this on multiple, multiple occasions. Even earlier today, we talked about it. But my understanding is that the scenario we're going to go with is the, the at least three feet of social distancing.
That's the minimum, that's the requirement that everyone is adhering to. So you have to have at least a minimum of three feet with a mask. Depending on the school, depending on the number, there will be more. There will be not, never a situation where there's any less. Obviously, we would shoot for the six feet. But according to all of the guidelines that we have from the American Academy of Pediatrics. Also, the, the CDC, when you look at the CDC's guidelines in terms of their, their checklist specifically, it discusses. The fact that. If you're at six feet. The CDC's specific guidelines that students are seated at least six feet apart in a classroom. Cloth, face masks are maybe considered. And it's not even mandated. And so. And when you're less than six feet, according to CDC's considerations, cloth face covering should be recommended. And again, we're mandating them. So. It, it depends on the, the particular school. It depends on how we maximize the space within that school. In terms of the range and where, where, where social distancing. Will be applied. And obviously, we know that in a cafeteria setting or when you're eating. That changes. There's no longer a minimum of three feet with a mask. That has to be at six feet.
Okay, so when we're talking about the three feet, it's from.
So think about it, where, as you're sitting right now, there will be nine square feet around you.
But in reality, I'm sitting in my chair and to the right of me, if you were sitting next to me and you were my partner in a social studies class. And you're three feet away, that will include a portion of your chair and that will include a portion of my chair. Because our three feet is from my body to your body, right?
It would be. So if I'm looking and we're doing it as a head count. So your head is, that person would, could be no closer than three feet to the left of you, front of you, back of you at a minimum.
Right.
That's a minimal with a mask.
Correct. So when I get up to use the restroom. We're no longer three feet apart.
Well, when you get up to leave the restroom, you're walking by someone.
Yes, I, but I'm now in the aisle. So now we're, we're not, we don't have three feet of distancing. So there will definitely be situations where students are not three feet apart.
I, I think generally speaking, there are situations now where we're not three feet apart from any, any person. But if we have a mask on. We're, we're saying in terms of where students will be situated. If I'm passing someone. To go to the restroom. Then I'm not standing next to that person per se. I'm bypassing them to go to the restroom.
Right, I, I understand that. I'm just saying that when I get up to use the restroom, we're no longer three feet apart. And so if we could have the most amount of space.
And that's what we're shooting for, Dr. Bob.
That, that would be best because we're not going to be three feet apart all the time. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, so, so thank you for that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was the. Dividers that many, 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 many educators from almost. Dividers that many, 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 many educators from almost every single elementary. School in our district sent the school board pictures of. And often they sent multiple pictures. And then we were also sent emails from parents to educators once they saw the dividers. That would be used at the round tables, do you, do you have an image of those dividers?
I believe you're talking about something that would resemble a um. I'm trying to think like a uh, partition board or something that we re-try fold. Um, that, that, that would be used and again. Wh-while that might be. Adequate, again, out there also saying that, you know, in essence, a divider. The, the mask is the safest thing that you can have with the social distance. Um, and, and dividers are not required.
Right, and, and I know that my question has to do with. Why was the decision made to purchase opaque dividers? That children can't see over. So if the intent of the divider is to be a physical barrier between a student. And their peers or a student and an educator. You would think that the, the barrier slash divider would be. You know, you could see through it. It would be transparent and I think when. Literally so many teachers, I actually wrote down how many educators sent us pictures saying, what are these? What are we supposed to do with them? How are they going to be effective in the classroom because our kids can't see through them? Which means if they're on the table, they can't see anything in front of them, including the whiteboard or including anything I'm projecting on the screen. Why we would go with the o, the opaque barriers or dividers?
And, and again, there are a handful of um. My understanding that, that obviously there were a handful of individuals who were adamant about having dividers. Um, and so I, I can go back and really look at cost and availability because I think that's the other thing. That we have to be mindful of, there have been tons of supply chain issues, whether that was. Technology, uh, whether that's Plexiglas, things that we would traditionally think um, would be available. You know, and so if there are issues with specific schools, just that we've been responsive thus far. Um, you know, that issue if, if it's available, you know, we've tried to source and get those types of things that folks want. But again, there, there are um, and have been and continue to be. Um, you know, supply chains, issues and things in terms of cost and availability as it relates to certain supplies.
So I would like to propose, because I'm always a solutions oriented type of person. Since those dividers haven't been used yet, if the district could see if we could send them back and be. Either reimbursed for them or be provided with. Clear and transparent dividers that students could actually see through and that the educator could actually see the student. Because I'm sure, because we haven't used them yet, right? And usually we can return things that we haven't used. I'm just putting that out there in the public domain. Uh, another question is, would there be any circumstances? That would allow students to be unmasked in a classroom?
There are health reasons, there are reasons within special programs. Um, we do have a process by which um, families would have to request. Um, but again, we know within our special programs and we do have. Health guidelines and things in place for um, special populations where we know that may be an issue. Um, and for anyone else um, going through uh, Dr. Brumal's office, who. Is our kind of district COVID liaison. Um, to have specific requests, whether that would be anything deemed medical. Um, or for other reasons to go through an approval process to, to, to determine, excuse me, whether or not. Um, a student would be masked, so we are requiring masks. Um, you know, from those who are five and up. Um, it is recommended um, at the preschool level. Um, but we also know and within our preschool program, they're. Ex- strongly recommending and using that as a teachable life skill. Um, for our preschoolers. Um, and so you. I'm not aware of any request that, that we've received thus far. Um, where we are anticipating students who are coming to school masked.
Okay, thank you, and. Okay, those are my questions for right now, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions as well. The first question that I have. Darrell or Superintendent Green, rather, can you explain a little bit more about Cook's situation? Um, I appreciate you answering Adriana's question about uh, the class sizes and how they will not go above numbers. Um, outside of the pandemic. Um, but I'm hearing and we've received emails from teachers saying that. They should be prepared to have classrooms with up to twenty four students. Could you speak to a little bit of that?
Again, that's based on families' responses for in person, we're using and how do you maximize space to ensure that you can properly social distance? Um, the, the, the students, I think Dr. Bone's question was more around. Lack of availability for staff and doubling up. Um, Cook's issue isn't necessarily lack of staffing as much as it is the fact that they've had. A rather large response rate. Um, and I don't know offhand of any teachers and we're still balancing numbers and identifying. Um, classes and class sizes uh, within those schools because the window is still open. But Cook has been the one school that has had the broad majority of response for in person.
Thank you, Superintendent Green, and then the other question that I had was. In regards to the isolation rooms and I appreciate you presenting on that. Um, and, and I just want to re-mention, you had, you had mentioned that they were all. Outside of the nurse's office, I'm hearing from the nurses, from some nurses that that's may not be the case. Uh, can you explain a little bit more about the location of where these isolation rooms are?
And again, it's the common area, so it's separate from where. The common area of the nurse's office, it might be adjoining or adjacent to the nurse's office. So I'm not saying outside is on another end of a building where we would just isolate someone. It's an isolated room with a door, I don't know of any other district that actually has it to the level of where we have it, where it's pulling in from outside air. And also has um. Again, HEPA filters as a part of specific filtration in there. And so some of our nurse's office actually has multiple areas of, of their suite. Where those isolation rooms are adjacent to that, to that office.
Thank you.
Jose, are you done? I have another question.
I am, thank you.
Okay, so um, I have a question, hold on one second. And it is if we look at Cook, if we go back to Cook. In fifth grade, there are eighty eight students and there are some of the older kids and the bigger kids. If we divide that by four teachers, then we have about twenty two students per class. So that seems like a, a larger number. Will we be able to social distance in that atmosphere?
Yeah, Cook is actually one of the schools that probably have some of the, the larger classrooms um, outside of Warner. And again, I would have to look at the numbers offhand. Uh, but twenty two in a fifth grade classroom is, is actually generally below where we have our K to three classrooms. So again, we're continuing to work with Cook to ensure that social distancing for those who have chosen in person. Um, is adequate and within the guidelines.
Okay, and then I just want to revisit the class size issue one more time. It was that um, you said that, you specifically said that class sizes wouldn't double. My question was, will they increase? Could they increase at all? So could you have a class that may at one point have been twenty one or twenty two, now going up to twenty six or twenty seven? Not necessarily an increase. I mean, not necessarily doubling, but definitely an increase.
I don't foresee a situation where we're going to put additional, more students into a classroom other than what they're enrolled in that particular classroom.
Okay, but they could be at the same number.
Potentially, if we can adequately social distance within that classroom, they could potentially be at the same number.
So we, so Red Clay can potentially have the exact same number of students in a classroom. That we regularly have in a non pandemic situation.
And I think the, the, the question is, how can we adequately adhere to the social distancing guidelines? Especially if, if we're putting them in a larger classroom. And socially distancing them. And so again, the. I, I understand the nature of your question and, and the challenge behind the question. But the challenge before us is to ensure that we can provide adequate and proper social distancing. Um, to be quite honest, I think the bigger concern would also be. The fact that when we talk about the, the health and science around it, that, you know, children under ten, elementary students. You know, the risk of spread and shedding of the virus. Um, to date, we've actually had, you know. Uh, partner agencies provide in-person support uh, for Red Clay students um, through this entire process. Um, whether that would be the Y M C A, the Boys and Girls Club. And other partners who are providing those supports and services to school age children. And so there are models for us to continue to view and, and, and learn from. Um, you know, a neighboring district to the south of us. Um, you know, Cape has in-person learning where they have upwards of, I believe seventy percent. Um, similar to us, elementary students in their schools for five days a week. Um, and so again, if we can safely social distance and provide the adequate P P E. Um, and again, sure that there's mask wearing. You know, we, we have to look at how we can, you know, offer hybrid in the terms of in-person learning. Um, and, and look at what those supports look like at a school like Cook in terms of. Capacity, large classroom sizes and, and how can we can assure social distancing with masks?
And I, I appreciate all the hard work you've done on this Superintendent Green, I've told you that before. My job is to hold your feet to the fire, so that's, that's the dance we will do.
It's, it's not a dance and, and it's not a matter of holding, you know, my feet to the fire. This is the, the, the work that I'm committed to. Um, that's why we've changed. Um, I know my team hasn't necessarily been happy, but we are trying to be as responsive as we can. Um, to the needs of the community, understanding that. There are differing needs throughout Red Clay. And again, for every family that feels like remote is working for them. You know, I've also had the parents who are telling me that they had to leave a job. Um, or, or lose a job um, to stay in a remote environment. We have students who, you know, unfortunately aren't engaging. I mean, so there, there are a number of needs that we continue to work through in a pandemic. Um, to ensure and, and, and safety is chief among them. And I think we have to realize that, you know, trying to reopen schools in a pandemic isn't what schools were on March the twelfth. Um, and eh, for no, no time in the foreseeable future will they go back to what they were. On March the twelfth because of everything that we're dealing with and, and the guidelines change. Um, you know, the, the, the notion of do we wait till there's a vaccine? I mean, you, you know, who knows and, and I know that a lot of children, families. Are struggling. Um, you know, and so as we try to meet the needs of our community, again. Among them, we'll continue to do our best. Um, to ensure that is our number one priority and again, working closely with. Um, you know, our lead nurse um, and our health and safety, our wellness team. Um, the Department of Health and other folks to ensure that we're adhering to the guidelines. We're exceeding the guidelines where we can, but more importantly, we're not sacrificing or diminishing anything within those guidelines. Just to get people back in school.
Thank you, and I, I just have a final question. Have you had any conversations with our C E A about their position on? Where we are in terms of returning to school and what they feel like?
Yes.
In terms of going back to school, any concerns that they have that you'd be willing to share with the public?
We've met with R C E A as. Latest today at four o'clock, um, we've set up regular meetings with R C E A. Uh, we understand that um. You know, a lot of their concerns is around communication. Um, and so as we continue and we've heard that from the community as well. Uh, a, a big challenge is ultimately on, how do you continue as, as it evolves? Um, so we're looking at more infographics because we put a lot of layered communication out to the community. Um, similar to how we receive the information. You know, so we've heard everything from concerns to, you know, the P P E that they thought it was an adequate P P E. But in actuality, we do. Uh, we do know in a remote learning environment, not all of our staff members have had the opportunity to actually come back into school. To see things like the hand sanitizers, dispensers, um, to see various things, so. You know, we, we are continued to engage um, with R C E A to hear their concerns. We know the early years program had a lot of concerns. Um, so Dr. Celestin. Mandy Pennington and Chris Smith in H R met with their staff today. You know, our special services and special program principals. Um, continue to work um, you know, closely with them. You know, so as much as we can hear concerns and, and the reality is, you know, I, I think all of the school districts as we grapple with. How do you reopen and, and reintroduce schools when we've been closed for seven months? Um, you know, obviously working closely and hearing um, the concerns of, of, of the union. Um, of the union leadership and of our teachers. Um, there's something that we'll continue to lean in. Um, to ensure that we can address those needs while also addressing the needs. Of our community, our teachers are stakeholder group. Um, our parents are stakeholder groups and more importantly, our students are stakeholder groups. So as we continue to hear all of those needs, how can we put the best plan? Um, in place, understanding that regardless of what we put out. It won't be pleasing to all, and I think that's been the biggest challenge of really trying to find an adequate plan to get us back to. What it was in March, knowing that we can't go back to that. And how do we put the adequate supports and services in place? Again, to, to recognize the pressure because we heard our educators, even in the remote learning environment. Discuss how overwhelming it is. To do what they've done and I, I truly applaud them and every time, time I get a chance. Um, to acknowledge the work that they have done to make, you know, a remote learning environment resemble a traditional school environment. Unlike any other district. And now we find ourselves in this transition point. Um, you know, we continue to engage and listen to, to what their concerns are.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we move on to public comment and again, thank you everyone for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts. The board is really interested in hearing and we wanted to ensure that every person that signed up could be heard. And would also have time to hear the board discussion about the action item. Under Board Policy two thousand and six, the board encourages the staff and community to share concerns regarding school issues and programs. Sharing can be verbally, in writing, and we've received many in writing. And by speaking at the meeting. As mentioned above, we've received many communications and emails and have had discussions with many parents and constituents about this plan. Under Board Policy two thousand and six. Um, speakers are requested to give a written copy of their remarks to the superintendent or the board. Speakers are limited to one minute time period. The time will be monitored by Ms. Maria Stevens and Mr. Tony Clements. Who are our behind the scenes wizards. And they will put a little clock up, so you will see when your time period expires, you will see the time period expire. And when that's done, your mic will be muted. The board encourages speakers with comments about specific individuals to share them with the superintendent. Who will provide the speaker with the procedure for submitting such remarks. But will permit com- public comments that are in compliance with our policy. Again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts. So um, the first up, I understand that Ms. Shanae Darby is not here, is that right, Maria?
Yes, she's not here.
Okay, so the first speaker is Ashley Sakura, welcome, Ms. Sakura.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I had a script, but I trashed it at the twenty minute, um, one to three minute public speaking debate. Uh, Mr. Green, I hear you, I appreciate you and I stand with you, I have two I, I P kids who are failing. I have one immunocompromised child that is failing. And I have one child that is uh. Talented and gifted that is failing, so I also realize you've got a couple individuals in this meeting right now. Who think they're speaking on behalf of a large population of people. But in reality, they're speaking on behalf of a small but very loud crowd. Mr. Green, these kids need to get back to school safely and I'm really scared we're losing sight of that. I wish we would stop modifying the plan to adjust the noise when in reality you see the facts. Over half of us parents have been asking you to put these kids back in school since the summer. I really hope this doesn't continue to deviate from the plan. That's all the time I need.
Thank you, Ms. Sakura. Next is Ms. Linda Reagan, welcome, Ms. Reagan.
Hi, thank you, thank you. Um, I also have truncated my message, um, there with me just a moment. Um, I. Comments that I'm hearing today. Which are, we will look at this, we will see, we will work with our teachers. Teachers are used to troubleshooting, but the safety of our children, teachers and our families should not be left to handle it on the fly. There need to be plans in place before children are in the classroom. Teachers need time to implement those plans. I do not believe that our teachers have enough time to receive and implement the information needed to ensure a safe return to schools for the second marking period. Please give our teachers the time they need to ensure a safe return to schools. Stay on the Zoom platform for the second marking period while the details are figured out, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan. Next is Ms. Kristen Stone. Thank you, Ms. Reagan. Next is Ms. Kristen Stone. Welcome, Ms. Stone. I haven't, we don't have Ms. Stone up, and I see a reply from Ms. Darby. We can put you back in, Ms. Darby, if you're here.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Stone, we hear you now.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm sorely disappointed that the elementary schools will not follow the same hybrid format as grade six through 12. I'm disappointed in the elementary school plan that will send kids, all kids who choose to return to school in every day, and thus creating class sizes similar to those outside of a pandemic. According to the CDC.gov quote, "It is crucial that all administrators implement multiple SARS-CoV-2 mitigation strategies." For example, social distancing, masks, hand hygiene, and use of cohorting. According to the CDC.gov, like Mr. Green mentioned, one must stay at least six feet from other people who are not from your household in both indoor and outdoor spaces. Also guidelines from Johns Hopkins and Harvard. These guidelines cannot be adhered to if elementary schools do not develop a hybrid plan as proposed by grades six through 12. From ProudToBeBSD.com, "Out of an abundance of caution and based on CDC recommendations, the Brandywine School District will require six feet of distance between student desks and will limit class sizes to eleven. If Brandywine can do it, so can Red Clay."
Thank you, Ms. Stone. And next, can we put Ms. Shanae Darby in and welcome, Ms. Darby?
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, um, yes, good evening, everyone. I'm calling, well, I'm not calling, but I'm on this call tonight to talk about the reopening of the schools and transitioning to that. I really think we should look at the timeframe and push back till January. And the reason why I say that, there's a second wave coming. Flu season is coming up. I think we should really wait till January to assess the situation. My daughter is in dance, and one person tested positive for COVID. Everybody had to stop dance for two weeks. Right? From one person testing positive for COVID, and everyone in my household had to get tested. So I'm afraid with my daughter going back to Cal Calaway, that might be something that happens. It's gonna be a continuous, just going back to school, coming home fourteen days of quarantine, going back to school. And I don't see how that would be productive to her learning environment where she's adjusting to the Zoom, the learning environment at home.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. Next is Mr. Lamar Egblod.
Hello?
Hello, we hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A follow-up of the previous speaker. Delaware is currently not out of the current COVID phase. Levels are still above five point five percent. And currently, COVID rates are increasing in Delaware. Case numbers are increasing, hospitalizations are increasing, and children rates are also increasing. Thirteen percent of children, there's been a thirteen percent increase national. This bodes, unfortunately, for multiple quarantines and potential school closings. My big fear is that we will do all this, we will have a big surge, and back to where we began. Today, Delaware reported a thirty percent increase in cases. I suspect that we will be closing before. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Egblod. And next is Ms. Anne Budashek. Welcome, Ms. Budashek.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. So since this div announced its reopening plans, social media has been abuzz with new parent groups and petitions protesting the plan, protesting the remote learning option and protesting opening at all. In reference to the remote learning plan, I've seen and heard a lot of, "But what about my child?" phrases. That phrase usually ends with something like this. "But what about my child who would have to take a different type of AP class, who wouldn't be able to continue with their dance or forensic classes for one quarter?" We are in a pandemic. Enough with those questions. It's time we ask questions on behalf of the parents who are too consumed trying to make ends meet, to keep the lights on and pay the rent, to busy themselves with social media groups. The parents who have to make actual honest-to-goodness hard choices. While we're at it, let's ask questions on behalf of the children who don't have anyone to ask for them at all, for whom school is the only safe place. I look forward to hearing our board members advocate on behalf of those families and those children tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Budashek. Next is Ms. Heather Orley. Welcome, Ms. Orley.
Percent, okay.
Gotcha. We can hear you.
Did they hear?
Did you hear you start?
Did you hear me start or no?
Yes, we, go ahead.
Okay, as I said at the last board meeting, remote learning's not working for my kids. A month later, I feel stronger than ever. As an RN, I have firsthand knowledge of COVID-19. I am one hundred percent okay sending my kids to school. We take risks daily. Please know the risk of keeping my kids home with remote learning far exceeds the risk of COVID-19. I was happy to finally have a choice to send my kids back for in-person education and peer interaction. It wasn't the ideal situation or the solution I wanted. It was only four of the five days they deserved. And now for my middle schooler, it's only two days. I'm sick and tired of seeing my kids angry, frustrated, and bored with Zoom meetings. And angry decisions continue to be made to keep my kids out of school five days a week. Stop being scared, open the schools, send them back. And as my sixth grader quoted to me today, when she realized her sisters, who are younger than her, will be in school four days, and she will only be in school two, mom, that's bullshit.
Thanks, Ms. Orley. And then Mr. Phil Orley, welcome. You can, you can start, Mr. Orley. I assume you're on mute. Okay, there you go.
I got it. A young lady in high school recently wrote, "I can't handle the way school is." She didn't write that on social media. She didn't write it on Twitter. She didn't write it to her school board. Her parents found that in her suicide note. The flu, according to the CDC, is a hundred times more dangerous than COVID is to our kids. For seventy-six percent of the teachers in Delaware, it's ten times more dangerous than COVID is. Are you guys, as the board and the teachers who are opposing going back to school, prepared to write apology letters to the students? Never mind the students, to the parents of the students who end up committing suicide because we're not supporting them properly and sending them to school? Send the kids back to school.
Thank you, Mr. Orley. Next is Amy Norton. Welcome.
I have to say bullshit.
Hi. I want to add some clarity to this plan. It places an unnecessary burden on teachers for the mere optics of students being in school. It's just a veneer of progress and nothing more. In-person education is not going to look like it did when we left in March. It's not going to increase our kids' outcomes. There's not going to be partner work. There's not going to be paperwork. As a teacher, I'm going to be at my desk six feet away from my students to keep me and them safe. People aren't going to get one-on-one help, so I don't know why we think that in-person is going to fix the problems, especially since now I'm expected to run two classes at once through Zoom and in-person at the same time. I am tired of being thanked for my grace, patience, and flexibility as opposed to seeing action. Teachers aren't superheroes. We're human beings with families of our own, and choosing between our job and the students we love or our safety and that of our families is unconscionable, and yet that's the choice that we have to face right now. As evidenced by our choice to limit our voice, I feel like I'm probably shouting them to avoid because people have already made up their minds. But I beg you to consider if, starting November 2nd, you'll be holding board meetings and district meetings in Red Clay classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Next is Rhea McSherry. Welcome, Ms. McSherry.
Hello.
Hello.
Over forty minutes were spent on a motion at the previous meeting to add a student representative to the board, which will be delivered in nine months' time. Now is the time to add a student voice to your board so you can hear from the people you actually serve. Time was wasted again tonight discussing reducing our time to speak to one minute. I'm really disappointed in this board. It doesn't meet my expectations during the most challenging circumstances of our lifetime. Everybody is on their own journey during this time. Actions and decisions you make in your own personal time, through your standing and authenticity on this board. Do all the board members still socially distance in their personal lives as well as professional? Have any of you dined out or been present in large crowds? How are these circumstances different from attending a board meeting in person or the kids being in school? The principle is the same. Why are the board voting on whether kids return to school or not? There wasn't a vote to keep them as virtual. It was just action.
Thank you, Ms. McSherry. Next is Ms. Lauren Bales. Welcome, Ms. Bales.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening. We can.
Great. Thank you for your time. I was hoping to communicate some research that might be useful to all of us. This is from two esteemed professors at the University of California, Professor Santabanas and Guarino. They looked at panel data using rates of absence in six large California districts to estimate the effect of the pandemic on schools and particularly on students' academic and social emotional outcomes. They found that the effects of the pandemic are going to look roughly like chronic absenteeism. In Delaware, where chronic absenteeism influences some schools much more than others, we're likely to see a larger negative effect on middle schoolers than on either elementary or high school students. This is obviously bad news in that certain vulnerable subgroups will likely experience additional academic losses as well as losses in social emotional learning. This may also pose some good news. We know that interventions for chronically absent students can be effective, and we've seen them work here. I implore the board to consider the safety of teachers who will have to.
Thank you, Ms. Bales. Next is Ms. Jennifer Bestin. Welcome, Ms. Bestin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure what to say in one minute. One minute is not the forty-five minutes you spent last month talking about putting a student on the school board. One minute is not the twenty-five minutes you spent last month talking about Hispanic Heritage Month. One minute is not the twenty minutes you spent discussing if board meetings should be held via Zoom. All important, but not the priority. But one minute is longer than any of you spoke about our back-to-school options in the board meeting less than one month ago. This meeting feels like grandstanding. We are doing our children more harm than good, keeping them on Zoom. I have a child who is getting stomach aches and one that is getting headaches from Zoom and a kindergartner. They need to be back in school. Superintendent Green is working extremely hard at these plans. The board needs to trust the person you hired to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bestin. Next is Ms. Yvonne Johnson. Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Darrell, for making the changes to the plans, but families can make the best choice for their families. Choice is the key here. It is a choice, in-person, hybrid, or remote. This is not a one-size-fits-all answer. Parents, never underestimate the power of your voices. Regardless of your choice, use your voice. I am thrilled to see this much engagement. This situation is reminiscent of inclusion, rushing to a plan that has not been well thought out and not including the parent voice from the beginning. I ask you, board, listen to families. I am disappointed, to say the least, that the board limited public comment to one minute. In my twenty-five-plus years of attending Red Clay school board meetings, I have never seen parents being shortchanged this way. Shame on you. And thank you, Adriana and Jose, for voting not to do that. Families should never have to choose between their child's health and the education they receive. Do the right thing and ensure all families can have their choice of education for their child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next is Ms. Maureen Lipsit. Welcome, Ms. Lipsit.
Hello?
Hello, we hear you.
Hi. My name is Maureen Lipsit. I'm a former Red Clay middle school teacher. I know that teachers struggle with classroom management and to meet the diverse needs of every student in their classes. Teachers are stretched and pulled in every direction. I know the stress that teachers are under every day, meeting the needs of not only the students, but also the demands of parents and administration, and it's, at the best of times, overwhelming. I know that teachers rarely have autonomy in their classrooms. Their rules and procedures are consistently overridden by administration, and students do not suffer consequences. I would like to know, as a parent, exactly how they are going to manage social distancing and mask-wearing in the classroom with children who are not compliant. I also think that the administration needs to explain to parents that the in-school option is not going to look like regular school. Students are not going to be socializing. It is going to be in front of a computer, most likely, and I think that needs to be explained. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipsit. And next is Mr. Brandon Bouchon. Welcome, Mr. Bouchon.
Thanks. I just went out there for a second. We know without any uncertainty that children have, by a wide margin, the lowest chance of getting or transmitting COVID, and we almost zero chance of dying from it. We've done this for months now. So what's more concerning, a teacher who commits suicide because they've had their sports taken away and their schools closed, or a teenager who contracts a virus with a ninety-nine point nine-nine percent survival rate for their demographic? So if all this data available, why are schools not open full-time? Children need to be in school every day to have the best chance of learning. That is simple common sense. It's also the most equitable solution. We've reached a point where we're not willing to engage in self-sacrifice, but we have no problem engaging in child sacrifice. Anxiety, depression, suicides are skyrocketing, yet we hear so many adults act as if COVID is the only health issue that matters. The long-term harm being done to our children right now is immeasurable.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchon. Next is, I guess, Ms. Latonya Wilma. Welcome.
I don't think Ms. Wilma is here.
Not here. Okay, so next is Ms. Christina Caldwell. Welcome, Ms. Caldwell.
I don't think she's here either.
Okay, so then next is Ms. Rhonda McDaniel. Welcome, Ms. McDaniel.
Not here either.
Okay, Ms. Judith Foster, and welcome to Ms. Foster.
Not here either.
Okay, Ms. Liz Reed, and welcome to Ms. Reed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. We can.
Hi, I wanted to say that the new choice that you have offered us is much better than the other choice. However, I still have my concerns about the three-feet distancing. When the CDC says minimum, I say minimum of six feet. I'm also worried about the teachers managing the in-class and Zoom at the same time on such short notice when they should have been learning to do this during the summer and been prepared like the local parochial schools have been. Also, with the holidays coming and the COVID numbers surely to rise, and all of the turmoil and misunderstandings you all had during the first hour of this, I think it's best to rethink how we're going to do it properly, keep the Zoom for marking period two, and implement this new plan properly for marking period three. And that is my honest opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And next is Ms. Paula Hutton. Welcome, Ms. Hutton.
Ms. Hutton? I'm here.
Oh, go ahead. You're on.
Sorry. And I am here speaking for multiple Red Clay elementary teachers that have contacted me. They wanted to speak tonight, but they were afraid of repercussions. They wanted me to tell you that the district's plan to put eighteen to twenty-two students in their classrooms is not okay. That many students in a classroom will prevent them That many students in a classroom will prevent them from being able to be out of their seats. The teacher will not be able to move about the room without being in someone else's bubble. According to one teacher, in order to fit that many desks in her room, students will be pushed against the smartboard. What is the point of bringing back students for face-to-face learning if the elementary teachers can't really teach or interact with students? Eating is an issue. Recession has the same problem. Large schools with hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty kids in a single grade, even when they're outside, they'll be too close to each other all day with a mask. For five-to-ten-year-olds is not just go-
Thank you, Ms. Hutton. And next is Mr. Jason Guineary. Welcome, Mr. Guineary. Oh, did I miss Ms. Kelly Roberts?
Not in, so you're fine.
Okay, that's what I thought. Welcome, Mr. Guineary. Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanted to say I have three kids in Red Clay, and I appreciate the option that we're finally giving parents whose kids need to go virtual. You guys are going to hear a lot tonight about equity in education, and I encourage you to remember that equity, you know, goes for all students, not just the students that are happy with the one-hundred percent remote option, but equity also goes for those students that absolutely need to be in person. We have been failing many students in the district since early September. We cannot wait till marking period three to move forward with in-person education. I mean, even tonight, you guys couldn't even do a roll call vote without technological issues, yet we're asking our students to learn this way. That is not very equitable at all. Parents that have, that need their kids to stay home, they can stay home, but we need our kids in school, and there's no reason not to start that now. We cannot wait. Each week that we wait, more and more kids fall further and further behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guineary. The next person is not here, so the next is Ms. Andrea Arena. Welcome, Ms. Arena.
Not here either.
Okay, thank you. Next is Ms. Catherine Stewart. Welcome, Ms. Stewart.
Wait, Andrea Arena's here.
Oh, she is. Okay, welcome, Ms. Arena.
Ms. Arena, we're unmuting you. Just don't touch the mute button.
Hello, Ms. Arena.
Ms. Arena, don't touch the button if you are. Kathy, you want to go to the next person and then-
Okay, so the next one is Ms. Kim Drebold. Welcome, Ms. Drebold.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to talk about the safety of the teachers and the students. So with, with folks and having children go back to school, you know, I know you all talked about PPE and masks, et cetera, but you know, one of the biggest things that I did not hear is about, you know, Clorox wipes and how are the teachers going to stay safe and the students when typically the parents supply those safeties to the community today? You cannot find those measures. So how are we going to do that and keep the teachers safe and the students safe? In addition with how this, the number of students that the superintendent was talking about in the classrooms, the teachers will not even be able to move around. So, you know, I, you know, would like the board to go in and sit in their masks in the room and sit there for seven hours a day and not move around and see how you can do it, and then expect these children to do it each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Drebold. Is Ms. Arena there, Maria?
Yes, she is.
Okay, Ms. Arena. Welcome.
I had muted her and-
Is the connection not working?
Well, I think they're trying to touch the button at the same time that we are. There, there you go.
Ms. Arena, you can't touch the button. Okay, are you there, Ms. Arena? We're not hearing anything, Maria. Why don't we work on that and move on to the next person, which is Ms. Julie McCray. Welcome, Ms. McCray.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the new third option for Zooming virtually with teaching from Red Clay teachers. My children will be returning virtual due to the increasing COVID numbers in Delaware. And it's not that I'm worried so much about COVID and our children. As other speakers have said, it's not a large risk for children, but I'm worried about what happens when they bring it home to older family members and/or spread it to teachers. I just want to acknowledge that there, there are no great answers here. All of these options are a poor substitute for what we had back before March twelfth. And the school administrators are really being forced to make some very tough decisions. The bottom line is COVID is the bad guy here, and we're all doing the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray.
Yeah.
Next is Ms. Jessica Revere. Welcome, Ms. Revere.
Kathy, let's try, let's try Arena again.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Arena. Let's hope this works.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My statement is in regards to elementary students that have IEPs who are both fully inclusive students and in special programs. To remove and change educators at this point in the semester will be a completely new start, a ground zero for those elementary students with IEPs. To be clear, if an elementary student wishes to remain in online learning situation, IEP or not, I would like to request that the Red Clay School Board be transparent when it comes to teacher and student placement, placements, so that parents can have as much information as possible when making the decision about online versus person. Allowing those students to remain in a synchronous online Zoom format in their current homeroom classrooms along with their special educators is key, especially for our elementary students with IEPs. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Arena.
Thank you.
So next is Ms. Jessica Revere. Welcome, Ms. Revere.
Hello?
You're fine, we can-
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone for their time tonight, and I appreciate all the effort going into this exercise. We chose the new third option for our children to Zoom in classroom. Also, with the consultation of our physician, this is what was best for our family. We shouldn't have to choose between our children's health and safety over their education. We need a balance of both. We must be offered a choice for in-classroom Zoom, on-campus, or accelerated learning option. We must have diverse options which are suitable for various family needs. There needs to be opportunities for students that wish to Zoom from home to have that option. My kids shouldn't be asked to breathe cleaning chemicals all day and worry about contracting a virus. It's just a distraction. I believe what the new developments, although they're not perfect, are reasonable and acceptable. Thank you.
Kathy? Did we lose Kathy Thompson? I think we lost Kathy Thompson.
Can we just move on to the next speaker?
Did we get Ms. Catherine Stewart? Does she speak?
It's Connie Regan.
Okay, I'm here now, Maria. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Constance Regan? Needs to be unmuted?
Regan, don't touch the button.
Don't touch your mute button, Ms. Regan.
Yeah, it's not working.
Okay. Let's, we'll see if we can come back to her. How's that?
Okay.
How about Mr. Kessler, Mr. Kessler Revere? Welcome, Mr. Revere. I see him, but he's muted.
Yeah. It's his button also. There's, now Connie Regan is okay.
Okay, Ms. Regan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're up now, okay?
Thank you.
We're having a little bit of trouble with this muting and unmuting.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Regan of Thomas McCain High School, a proud Highlander for the past sixteen years. My colleagues and I worked tirelessly to make a meaningful online experience for our students with little time to prepare, and now we are doing so again, facing the unknown with insufficient resources and insufficient time. Only now, instead of keeping us safe, you are sending us into danger, and while families have a choice, teachers don't. I have no time to share the comments I spent the past week preparing. I am saddened that you have seen fit to muzzle the community and will not take time to adequately hear our carefully researched and crafted concerns. COVID is still a tremendous unknown. Recent reports show a dangerous uptick, and there are documented cases within Delaware schools just today at Lake Forest. And the CDC now states that six feet is insufficient, and the airborne virus can infect people hours after it has been released into the room. All the stickers and hand sanitizer in the world won't change that. I have far more to say, but I have no more time. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Regan. Mr. Kessler Revere, welcome, Mr. Revere. And now I believe you can unmute yourself.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
All right, so I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work and effort. And I do understand it's a very difficult decision in mitigating the risk for everyone as well as what's the best for our children and their education. I do think that the additional options that we've been given are great. We are choosing to have our kids do the full virtual learning. But in the conversation that we, or in the comments that have been made, I think people are taking light of the COVID and not taking into perspective that there may be additional ramifications with catching the virus and how that might affect people long-term. And I think that the option that is given is a great one, and that way we can all make the adequate decision on what we think is best for our children and our family going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Revere. Mr. Bahelik is not here, so the next up is Ms. Carrie Corbin. Welcome.
You okay with this?
I don't think Corbin is here.
Okay, so the next is Mr. Harry Yusum Messi. I probably butchered that one. He's not here. Okay, so then Ms. Kim Stock, and congratulations on your Teacher of the Year award. Welcome. I think you can unmute yourself now, Ms. Stock.
All right. Okay, good evening. I am the 2021 Red Clay Delaware Teacher of the Year. I am perplexed to hear you do not want to be here all night, listening to comments when teachers have been working harder than ever during this past year, and we have also lost students, our families, and our emotional and physical health have also taken a hit. As teachers, we'd like to give the I-do, we-do, you-do model. So will anyone make a decision for teachers to do the model first, how we can effectively Zoom and online at the same time with students with high disabilities and ELDs? My sister-in-law and brother teach in Nebraska, and they haven't seen students in person or remotely at the same time since August twelfth. This alone, eight students in class members had a quarantine, and there are sixty-three students with COVID. My niece in the first grade has had eight steps of TB and her very, very, very quick day from the stress. Students moving into the class are largely ignored. Every class is miserable. Kathy, I still hope teachers are advocating for protection now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stock. Next is Mr. Mike Matthews. Welcome, Mr. Matthews. And you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, board and Mr. Green. I am Mike Matthews, eighth-grade special education teacher at Skyline Middle School and member of the Red Clay Education Association Executive Board. Tonight, our board took the extraordinary action of voting on a resolution condemning the board's vote to limit public comment during tonight's meeting. Our CEA members on both sides of this debate have shared with us their desire to give public comments fight. Excuse me. They crafted their comments, believing they would get three full minutes to share them. In my twelve years of attending board meetings, I have never seen the board cut from three minutes to one minute the public's right to comment. Our CEA condemns in the fullest this undemocratic and completely non-transparent action by the board. Please note that this statement is in no way reflective of our ongoing collaborative relationship with Mr. Green and the rest of the district leadership during this reopening discussion and planning. This statement is only directed at the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Ms. Subchenko is not here, so the next is Ms. Elena Matthews. Welcome, Ms. Matthews.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, we can.
All right. From a logistical perspective, you might think that this plan is adequate, but we live in a world where just considering logistics is a luxury. Mental and emotional health are the reality we're living in. Plans have been constantly changing, sending students and teachers on a roller coaster of uncertainty and anxiety. We live in such uncertain times, but I never thought that when my mental health was at its worst, the district that's supposed to be focused on my success was the reason I was losing motivation and hope for my future. I ask you, how are students expected to sit in front of their computers for seven hours with a meager thirty-minute break during the school day? How will you address the lack of motivation and increasing emotional distress of students at this time? Does the district even have a plan for reforming harmful policies, or are students expected to sacrifice their health because of your unpreparedness? The health and safety of your constituents are on the line, and a majority of you have shown you're unable to handle this responsibility. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Next is Mr. Rabbi Michael Beals. Welcome, Rabbi Beals.
Red Clay School District approach is that they are trying to create a one-size-fits-all model for the entire school system, but each goal is different with different student population densities. In the case of Calaway School for the Arts, we chose this goal because of its arts specialties. For this unique school, it would be more, make more sense to adopt the Delaware way, a compromise. Have the unique performing visual and calm arts classes meet at Calaway safely in small numbers with appropriate spacing. And have the academic classes continue to be at home with interactive Zoom, like is happening now. This approach will be different at each school. Empower the principals of each school to make informed decisions for the unique building with their unique specialties. Keep our kids safe and keep them engaged. To that, thank you for this opportunity to share a possible solution.
Thank you, Rabbi Beals. Next is Ms. Brittany Dolman. Welcome, Ms. Dolman. Oh, she's not here. Next is Ms. Kira Rose. Welcome, Ms. Rose. I'm not here. Okay, next is Ms. Christina Persante. Welcome, Ms. Persante.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. A leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way. Red Clay School Board and Mr. Green, as an employee of Red Clay, I have no clue which way I should be going and would appreciate you showing us the way so we can give our students the quality education they deserve. We have been led down so many different paths and then asked to turn around. You have taken us on a roller coaster ride that many of us are tired of being on. What I am asking is this: one, if you know the way, tell us. Tell us before you announce to our families and not at the same time, so we have the chance to find answers to our questions. Two, go the way. Where is the solid detailed plan? Please make a solid plan and stick to it. We are tired of getting information one day and it changing the next. Three, show us. Show us your teachers that we are valued. We, you want to give our children a quality education. Don't give us a weekend's notice or several days to come up with a plan due to the fact that you are the ones not fully prepared. We, your staff, need your guidance in this unprecedented time, and we are not getting that. For many of us, it is unacceptable. We need time to prep and prepare and give our kids what they need most, a quality- For many of us, it is unacceptable. We need time to prep and prepare and give our kids what they need most, a quality education. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Ms. Persante. And next is Mr. AJ Grenn, Grennitz. Welcome, Mr. Grennitz.
No.
Not here. Okay, I see it. Okay, next is Ms. Jessica Wolf. Welcome, Ms. Wolf. You can unmute yourself, Ms. Wolf. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm appreciative of your efforts. I don't envy your position, being flooded by emails from parents and having to make very difficult decisions in very uncertain times. However, I am extremely disappointed to see how divided the school board is. And witnessing the debate over one versus three minutes for public comment, which wasted the first 15 minutes of our time together, is very disheartening. It makes me wonder if our school board is making decisions based on their genuine care and concern for our children and community, or if they are being fueled by interpersonal conflicts amongst individuals on this board. With a unified school board working together, I believe we would have been posed with a more thoughtful reopening plan that could have avoided all of this. Are you working together to come up with answers to our questions? How can we trust this board to make decisions that truly support the community when you blatantly and openly debate whether or not to silence us on this call, a call that we, the community, requested? This is our time to be heard. It is your responsibility to provide an equitable education for all, one that supports each family's unique situation and needs, whether that's to go in person or stay home.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Next is Ms. Kelly Reeves. Welcome, Ms. Reeves.
She's not, excuse me. Is Zohar.
Okay, Mr. Zohar Law. Welcome.
Zohar is not here.
Not here. Okay. Ms. Jacqueline Blake. Welcome, Ms. Blake. You can unmute yourself, Ms. Blake. There you go. You just muted again. Ms. Blake?
Are you there?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have been selected to express why my colleagues and I believe Red Clay is not ready to return to in-person education during this unprecedented, unprecedented situation. The updated hybrid option presented by Red Clay allows its community to choose an educational setting that's comfortable and convenient for their family. The staff was not afforded this luxury. Unless we have underlying health conditions, we do not have any reasonable options. It is disheartening to not take into consideration who the employee resides with or cares for. Staff are forced to choose between our job and our family. Although students are permitted to come to school just twice a week, we're on the front lines full-time, including other essential personnel, not just teachers. Don't forget, our, our schools at the high school level, our, our students work outside the home, and they bring that into our buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. And next is Ms. Kelly Reeves. Welcome, Ms. Reeves.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this time. I truly do appreciate the, the clear time, energy, and effort that has been put into all of the decisions that have currently been presented to all of the families. I would like to echo what a few of the parents have said about trying to make sure that we are not trying to fit everyone into one box, but giving us choices. I did appreciate the fact that you updated the online options when it first felt like it was forced for our kids to go back, even if they were concerned, or if they had, if they wanted to stay home, but because it wasn't echoing what they were already used to, they didn't feel that they could stay home and still get a quality education, so they were feeling like they were forced to go back to school. But I would like to, again, just say that between the teachers I'm hearing and fellow parents, that maybe we should really investigate staying home for maybe another month to really iron out for the teachers.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Reeves. Next is Ms. Kristen Dunn. Welcome, Ms. Dunn. And you can unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you for your time and attention tonight. I understand that there will never be a plan that will meet the needs and expectations of our, of our diverse student population and their families. I appreciate all of the hard work and discussion that has gone into these plans. As the parent of an immune-compromised student, I implore you to continue to provide equity of education for all students and their varied needs. This paramount to keep in mind the safety of our students, teachers, and staff during these difficult times. I recognize that our children may have many faceted issues, including but not limited to social, emotional needs. But please put safety first during a global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Eric Ford. Welcome, Mr. Ford.
I'm sorry, Kathy, no Eric Ford.
Not here. Okay, next is Dr. Jay Sri Taylor. Welcome, Dr. Taylor. You can unmute yourself, Dr. Taylor. There you go.
Hi, I want to thank Superintendent Green for the tireless work you've been doing for our community during this most difficult time. As a physician, I'm sad to say that you, Mr. Green, never needed to be put in this position to make such monumental decisions. If only our national and state leaders followed the advice of the Global Health Guidelines. Before making decisions about efforts, should have been aggressively focused on reducing community spread of coronavirus. According to the Harvard Global Health Institute, Newcastle and Sussex Counties are experiencing accelerated spread of coronavirus. We're above the Harvard and World Health Organization's threshold in being able to control the spread of the virus. The odds of children returning to school in a sustainable way without substantial collateral damage is not in our favor. Favor. People will say that children are unlikely to die from COVID-19, but our children don't live in a bubble. They go home to their families and many situations extended families with multiple generations under one roof. Teachers and administration and custodial staff will be among those affected by these decisions, too. Public health organizations have recommended bringing certain populations of students in first. Why don't we grant these high-risk children the first divs at going back?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Next is Ms. Lauren Havens. Welcome, Ms. Havens. And you can unmute yourself. Ms. Havens, unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. Hi, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. I just want to thank you again for all of your hard work for the board. I have two, we have two sons. They're in sixth and eighth grade, and they luckily have two parents that work remotely. I've worked in higher education for 10 years and online learning for over five years. I'm getting my doctorate degree and actually studying online learning, so I do love that platform. However, despite my experience, I'm here to ensure that my kids continue face-to-face learning. I do like this most recent plan, and I'm very appreciative of everyone taking into consideration kids that want to go back face-to-face. My kids are ready. They've been going back. We've got
I did it. I did it.
My two boys with ADHD and 504 plans really want to go back to their in-person education. They've had many challenges, social, emotionally, and academically. And by the way, mental health is just as important as physical health. So what about the online population or people who are not understanding that other kids have to go face-to-face? Parents that are choosing the option do have concerns about the platform, and that's understandable.
Thank you, Ms. Havens. And next, Ms. Melody Haley. Welcome, Ms. Haley. You can unmute yourself, Ms. Haley. Ms. Haley, unmute your mic.
You scroll down. Thank you. Um, my
You're muted again, Ms. Haley.
Sorry. We've been, you know, the online has been, has been a struggle, but we've been doing pretty well, and we do have an compromised child. So I really wish that we could stay with this platform. I appreciate the third option that's come up. We've chosen that to stay at home at the Zoom meetings. I have a new concern that the teachers will change. And, and that is my main concern at this time is the sisters that they have now. How to have a child with an IEP, and, and she likes the teachers that she has and works well with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Next is Ms. Rachel Becker Klein. Welcome, Ms. Becker Klein.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to thank the Red Clay School Board and Mr. Darrell Green for addressing many of the concerns that families have, have had and expressed. And the updated, updates to the reopening plan have addressed many of those concerns, so I appreciate that. However, it is clear that the ship is still being built as we're asking people to get onto the ship. And we still need a lot of answers to how things will be safe in this school. How will transitions happen safely in the hallways? How will children go to the bathrooms? How will they be cleaned? Having hand sanitizing stations in the classroom is not enough. We have a lot of concern for the safety and well-being of the teachers as well, and how they will be able to be safely in school. So the plan needs to be complete and detailed and clear before children are let into the building. There are too many details that have not been addressed yet. I recommend waiting another marking period.
Thank you, Ms. Becker Klein. Next is Ms. Lauren Monaco. Welcome, Ms. Monaco.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I feel fortunate I've been able to be home and available for my first grader during his virtual school day, but let me assure you, this quote "privilege" has been heartbreaking as a parent with what I have to witness and keep inside. I see isolated young children struggle who need more help, but both parents are working and understandably not able to jump in. I see a nurturing teacher seeing this need and trying everything she can to help them despite having to manage every other child in the Zoom at their varying levels. I see the irony of children logged on remotely from noisy childcare centers, unable to concentrate. I see children mentally struggle to focus under this virtual platform with all the distractions and interruptions. I see my child struggle, my strong child ultimately break down in tears, and I see the light and spark in their eyes fading. While I do see people getting into a groove and having good days, I ask that you do not misinterpret good moments for a sustainable, long-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Monaco. Ms. Cruz is not here, so the next is Ms. Shannon Fortner. Welcome, Ms. Fortner.
Fortner is not here.
Not here. Okay, next is Connor Reagan. Welcome, Mr. Reagan. Hello? Oh, okay. Ms. Fortner is here. So Ms. Fortner? Looking on your, there you go. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, Shannon Fortner. I'm the mother of a Dickinson ninth grader, and we support the modified plan that was released for grades six through 12 yesterday. We wanted to thank all involved with developing that plan. The online option is much improved over the initial offering, and the on-campus option will allow better social distancing. So I see two areas of opportunity for additional improvement, and it's been brought up already, but teachers are taking on a lot of burden with this plan, having to teach in-person and online simultaneously. And we do think they should be included in the planning to make sure they have support and resources they need to implement the modified plan. I also recognize that some students really need to be in school, and my hope is that after we know the counts for in-person learning, maybe there will be space to think about a third limited cohort of students who really need three or four days on campus. So that's it for me. Thank you for your willingness to listen and to modify plans.
Thank you, Ms. Fortner. And next is Mr. Connor Reagan. Welcome. You can unmute yourself. I see Linda Reagan, and I take it, I think it's your son.
To load.
There you go.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Connor Reagan. I'm a senior at Calhoun College School of the Arts, and I am disappointed by the board's decision to move this from a three-minute, three minutes per person to one minute per person. I feel like it's diminishing our voices. It's diminishing our chance to be heard. For one, I, I am in favor of the, the new plan with a few questions. One, are we going to have six-foot social distance, and even with half of the students there? Even with, when breaking up into cohorts, we need to be able to stay six feet. It's important that we go back, but it's even more important that we do it safely. Second of all, I feel like the plan for elementary schools puts the teachers and the children at risk. They're not in cohorts. They're going there four days a week. They are right next to each other. They're going to be eating in the classrooms for these snack times. They're going to be near each other on recess, on, on the playground. And I urge the board to either come up with a better plan or to give it a marking period to figure things out.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. And next is Ms. Stephanie Forman. Welcome, Ms. Forman. And you can unmute yourself, Ms. Forman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So when this school year started, families weren't given a choice, and that put a lot of families, you know, they were up in arms about that. And our district has worked hard to give these families a choice, and they've even come back twice now to offer even more choices. Because what they initially offered, families still didn't think were good enough. But honestly, none of these choices are ideal. You know, my family has chosen to return in person, and we know that the classroom and the school setting are going to be far from what my oldest two even remember, but it's still the best choice for our family. And the important piece is that we're given the choice here. I really just please ask that everyone stops dragging this out and gives us the choice that all families ask for and lets the teachers and the families make these adjustments to the choices that they've selected.
Thank you, Ms. Forman. And so the next three speakers are not here. So the next person is Ms. Nicole D'Onofrio. Welcome, Ms. D'Onofrio. You can unmute yourself, Ms. D'Onofrio. Ms. D'Onofrio, just unmute yourself.
I can't.
There you go.
Hello, can, can you hear me now? Sorry, it was not responding at all. Okay.
Now we do.
Thank you very much. I too echo what a lot of the parents have already said about how important this decision is, and thank you. You know, I would not like to be in your shoes, and I appreciate what people are doing and the decisions and the difficult discussions that they're having to make. I would like to build on the comments of a few other concerned folks tonight about not really understanding that this is not going to look like what it did in March. Dr. Green said that several times during his presentation. I would like to know who is going to monitor and enforce mask wearing and going to the bathroom and cleaning the bathroom on regular basis and keeping the students out of the bathroom when they need to clean it, and they need to leave some time. None of that has been described, and I, and I feel like students, teachers, and staff are already overburdened. Are they going to have to do that, too? Thank you very much, and take, stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. D'Onofrio. Next is Mr. Joe Parker. Welcome, Mr. Parker. You can unmute yourself. Mr. Parker, can you unmute yourself, please? Mr. Parker, can you please unmute yourself? To speak? Okay, why don't we move to the next person? Ms. Kelly Furco. Welcome, Ms. Furco, and we'll go back to the part, Mr. Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kelly Furco, kindergarten teacher at Richardson Park Elementary School and president of the Red Clay Education Association. I speak here tonight to share the feedback from our members regarding the current reopening plans for our district. We recognize the impossible task of developing an educational solution to a health crisis, but based on member feedback, we simply aren't there. With a large majority of the 606 respondents to our survey, a majority of them agreed to participate in regular COVID testing and practicing and modeling health and safety guidelines while in school. According to our survey, 58% feel necessary improvements have not been made. Those improvements include infrastructure, HVAC, daily procedures, PPE, safety protocols, proper signage. 89% of our members also agree that students should be tested prior to entering the building. And 70% of the respondents do not feel comfortable returning to in-person learning. RCA is hopeful that the information presented this evening will instill the confidence our members want as we
Thank you, Ms. Furco. Next is Mr. Vaughn Morgan. Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green, for your presentation and for putting that together, but I feel like it's very unfortunate that some of the board members voted in support of limiting our voices. This pandemic is still here in Delaware. The cases are rising, and you have to put the students, the teachers, and their families first. We don't know where anyone is coming from when they come into our buildings, and it only takes one person to spread it along to other people. Someone mentioned earlier that COVID is not as dangerous as the flu, but I'm on the CDC website right now, and it says COVID spreads more quickly than the flu, and there is no cure, and sometimes people suffer further complications. So I'm not sure where that came from. Being in the school looks way differently, so it takes an impact on children's social, emotional health. Just think about people that you may know who has COVID or families that have suffered from COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And next is Janet Cates. Welcome, Ms. Cates. You can unmute yourself, Ms. Cates. There you go. Nope, now you're muted again. There you go. Nope, muted again. You keep kind of muting and unmuting. Can you unmute yourself, Ms. Cates?
There. Is that better?
That works.
Okay. My name is Janet Cates. I'm a speech-language pathologist, and I serve on the RCA Executive Board as Special Education Co-Chair. I do have to say that I'm appalled at the way the majority of the board so easily shook off their responsibility to the Red Clay community this evening. In the middle of the worst pandemic in a century, our community deserves better. Now, I want to acknowledge the hard work that our staff and our district and building administrators have put in during the past six months. I appreciate the collaboration between the district and RCA. I believe that a safe return to in-person instruction is possible and desirable. However, communication during the last six months has been a big concern. Building and district administrators have supported us and kept us updated as decisions are made, yet we still have many questions about procedural changes that will be needed to maximize safety for students and staff. We need to ensure that safety procedures are in place before we open our doors for students and staff to return to in-person instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Cates. So next up is Ms. Dorothy Weber. Welcome, Ms. Weber. And Ms. Weber, you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can, Ms. Weber.
Can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Weber, we hear you. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Yes.
If the board has to vote to sign a waiver to allow more than 22 students in any K-3 classroom during a traditional school year, why are elementary classroom capacities even approaching 20 in the middle of a health crisis in at least nine of 14 of our elementary schools? RCA has been told that this is calculated based on a minimum requirement of three feet separation when wearing masks. We would argue that the health and safety of our students and staff and families warrant more than the minimum. Big-picture district numbers do not factor in how many staff members are allocated to online learning, thus making them unable to reduce the student-
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Next is Ms. Amanda McKay. Welcome, Ms. McKay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You all are tasked with the unenviable job of creating a school reopening plan. This plan is never going to make everyone happy, however, it should keep everyone safe. Getting children back into school safely should be the top priority. With so much changing and more research coming in every day, planning for safety of teachers, staff, and children is going to be paramount. The plan set forth leaves way more questions than answers, and it just barely scrapes by following safety standards. Please consider leaving the second marking period the same as the first marking period has been and using that time to work as a larger group to develop a more concrete, safe plan. Please do not rush this or put any of us in a position for choosing education or help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. And next is Ms. Patty Puskarsuk. Welcome.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am a Red Clay parent, but today I'm coming to you now as a teacher with four words: We are not ready. With extending the deadline for parents to choose, that has put our buildings at a disadvantage. If we are expecting, if we are extending the timeline on one end, why are we not extending it on the other end? It's impossible to plan for a classroom or building when you don't know the exact number of students. I've worked hard with my building administration on some of the logistics of the daily routines, but for every question or procedures that we answer, it seems that five more come up. I'm just saying again that if we rush this, it could possibly be disastrous, and I feel rushed. Most of us don't know if we're teaching virtually, in-person, or even a combination of both. Some of us don't know if we're going to be teaching something else or somewhere else. This is not only nerve-wracking, but could be potentially lethal if we go in without proper precautions and preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Melody Brown. Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Hi, thank you. So I just want to say first you are rushing the plan. We need to have a more concrete plan. As a parent, I have to choose between Zoom and having possibly a new teacher or to return my student back to school and sign a waiver that says there's a significant risk for you to return your child to our building, and we want to be excused from being responsible for our decision. All I can think of, are you kidding me? Why are we opening the doors? The numbers across the US are rising. Delaware rose 30% just today. The CDC reports COVID is both airborne and droplets. Airborne needs to have enclosed space. People talking and inadequate ventilation. The schools can be a pressure cooker for this virus. Can you share with the community the third-party reports for the ventilation of the clean of the rooms and the school? I am a hospital worker, and I've witnessed the struggles of families who have suffered and died from the COVID-19. Please stop saying that the kids are safe. They are not. They are being admitted to the critical care unit.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And next is Ms. Lisa Malatesta. Linda Malatesta.
Hi. Thank you. I just want to say that many countries, including our own, have reopened thousands of schools, and they have seen no discernible increases in cases. There's been no surge in cases when these schools have been opened. Studies also show that young children rarely, if ever, spread this virus. Childcare in some states continue to be available throughout the height of the pandemic. Brown University conducted a study with 25,000 kids, and only 0.16% of those kids tested positive, with only 1% of 9,000 staff members testing positive. This virus has been politically blown out of proportion from the start, and I really feel that our kids are being used as pawns in this game. We are masking our faces to hide from a quote-unquote deadly virus with a 99% chance of survival. A virus we don't even know we have until we take a test, which has a high probability of being incorrect. And frankly, this is embarrassing. Let our kids go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malatesta. And next is Mr. John Wiley. Welcome, Mr. Wiley. Wiley? You need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I would like to discuss the unintended negative consequences of my three granddaughters, such as a meltdown by my kindergartner, a fourth grader who had to obtain professional counseling, a sixth grader that has developed anxiety issues. Here are what I said: Meltdowns, professional counseling, anxiety issues. I researched what the role of the school board is, and here's what it said: "First and foremost, the school boards look out for the students. Education is not a line item on the board agenda. It is the only item." Remember what your role is as a school board. I plead with you. Get the children back in the classroom where they belong, five days a week, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. And then Ms. Barbara Wiley is next. Welcome, Ms. Wiley.
There should be a mute up top. Come in here. You can't go on yours. You have to get back on yours. I can't tell her anything. I'm muted.
You're not muted, Mr. Wiley.
What?
You're not muted.
Yeah, that was the account that was used for both of you.
Now, Mr. Wiley, I guess you put the same name in for both, so can your wife come and speak at your computer?
Sure, she can.
That would be great.
Barbara, come in here.
My words are here.
Well, yeah, bring it to here.
My key is on the computer.
Okay. Can we come back to Ms. Wiley? Maria?
Hi.
Okay. Next is Ms. Heather Lawson. Welcome, Ms. Lawson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Heather Lawson. I'm speaking today to advocate that families of elementary-age children need an in-person choice that is free from the limitations of the virtual environment. Parents who are not comfortable can keep their kids home. They deserve a choice. My family deserves a choice for a better education. For me, in-person is not about childcare. It is education. I do want to state that we need an in-person experience to be free of the challenges of virtual, background noise, connectivity issues, missing materials. These things stop learning for the whole group, and they cannot be avoided, no matter how good the teacher. In-person instruction will have enough challenges for young children. We do not need to add the drawbacks of virtual to that list. Please keep our teachers focused on developing and delivering lessons in one-classroom mode. I also ask the board to not kick this can down the road again. If we cannot do this now, I challenge each member to tell us what needs to change before we get to move forward. Give us a metric. Give us something tangible.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. And next is Mr. Derek Fuller. Welcome, Mr. Fuller.
You forgot Ms. Wiley.
Oh, is she on? I don't see her there. Is Ms. Wiley there?
Is under Mr. Willie.
Okay, Mr. Willie, is Barbara there?
I'm here.
Okay, hi.
I'm here. My computer didn't have an unmute button. Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I'm a parent and a grandmother now of Red Clay students. I'm a registered nurse and the wife of a double lung transplant recipient. For three years, face masks, hand washing, and cleaning surfaces have protected us. It can work in the schools. Our kids are smart and will follow the guidelines. My grandchildren are examples of that. We should not be so afraid of COVID. Online classroom is failing our kids. Sitting isolated in a room in front of a computer is harming them. I feel that the teachers are doing the best they can. Boredom and frustration are major problems. Our sixth grader, my husband said this, our sixth grader has developed anxiety issues. The fourth grader now is getting professional counseling because of emotional issues, and our kindergartner melts down almost every day. She hopes there's no school the next day and asks that question. She's got 12 years ahead of her. Is this a way for her to start her education? Our children need the daily intellectual, physical, and emotional learning that school provide.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Next is Mr. Derek Fulton. Welcome, Mr. Derek Fuller. Welcome, Mr. Fuller. And you need to unmute yourself, Mr. Fuller. Mr. Fuller, can you unmute?
That's not the correct Fuller.
That's not the right one. Can we get, we'll come back to him? Is that okay? I think the next person is Mr. Brian Jamison.
They're not here, Kathy.
Okay, not here. Okay, then, is it? Ms. Megan Moorhead? Well, Amanda, Ms. Amanda Dougherty, I see you. I'm sorry, Miss Dougherty. I, there's too many names to deal with. My apologies.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm here tonight as a Red Clay employee and as a parent of a Red Clay student. The reopening plans as they stand now are not safe. Community spread of COVID has been rising. The number of cases is higher now than August, when we were supposed to return to school. If it was unsafe to return then, why is it safe now? There are too many variables, contradictory information, and unanswered questions to be able to open schools safely. The level of stress, anxiety, and fear some of us are experiencing with this new plan is overwhelming, and I feel our children and teachers are being forced into an unsafe situation. I've been informed we will not be issuing temperature checks to students upon arrival. School staff and students are at the mercy of an honor system relying on parents to do a health check on their children before sending them to school. If you work in education, it is well-known that parents send their children to school sick all the time. One point I would like to make is when I emailed my concerns to our local representatives, I've received several auto responses stating they were-
Thank you, Miss Dougherty. And is Mr. Jamison not here, Maria? Okay, so Ms. Megan Moorhead is next. Welcome, Ms. Moorhead. Ms. Moorhead, you need to unmute yourself. You keep, you-
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you, Red Clay School Board, for allowing parents to voice their opinions on this reopening plan. I believe that parents should be given a choice on what option they choose for their family. I know that my child needs to be in the classroom for his emotional well-being. Nobody on this board or even watching this meeting is in my house watching my second grader cry all the time because of virtual learning. It's emotional and exhausting for him. And I know he's not the only kid going through this. It's heartbreaking for these kids. Parents shouldn't feel bullied by other parents or Red Clay teachers or staff on what options they choose for their kids. I know that while my child needs to be in the classroom, there are others who are doing really well with virtual learning. Again, it should be the parent's choice to decide what's best for their own family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Moorhead. And next is Ms. Tammy Baxter. Welcome, Ms. Baxter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am here to speak on behalf of my kids and to advocate for their well-being. There is no doubt in my mind that my kids need to be back in school. Since the shutdown, both have regressed in academics and the ability to learn. They've become less confident students, miss their friends, and school activities. My 10-year-old is coping with virtual school, but she is by no means thriving. She struggles every day with learning topics like adding and subtracting fractions while staring at a Chromebook sitting alone in a room. My 13-year-old daughter and I battle all the time about screen time and being isolated in her room. Common problems with the teenager, but highly intensified with virtual school. My normally straight-A student has fallen behind, as evidenced in her grades. In conclusion, I strongly disagree with and condemn the actions of those people who are trying to get Red Clay to stay virtual for the second marking period. It's one thing to advocate for what you think is best for your family, but doing that at the expense of others is inexcusable. Each family has a choice with Red Clay's reopening plan. However, the people who want the district to remain virtual are-
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. And next is Suda. I'm not sure if it's a Mr. or a Ms. Viall, Viall, welcome.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Suda, very much, really. Thank you. I know it's a difficult last name. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I want to thank Red Clay School District for listening to us and revisiting the options that you have provided. Even though I'm happy with the options that are provided, I'm still concerned about the six-feet distancing. And also, as we have heard on the call, a number of teachers are concerned that they're not given enough time to plan properly for the new proposals that are out there. So I would request the board and the Red Clay School District to give teachers a chance to plan better so that they are really ready to handle both online and in-person at the same time, doing Zoom as well as in-school teaching. At the end of the day, we want everybody to be safe and also a balanced education as well, but I think health comes first, so safety is what I would say is.
Thank you very much. And next is Mr. Greg Zalano. Welcome, Mr. Zalano.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I would like to thank Superintendent Green, the Red Clay School District, and the board for all their hard work during these trying times. I've listened to every board meeting since the beginning of the pandemic, and I honestly believe that everyone involved is trying to do their best for all the Red Clay students. There'll be so many opinions tonight on both sides of the topic of returning to school, and I believe that whatever decisions are made, one side of this debate will not be happy, and this will never end. There will be calls for another protest, another petition, or perhaps another request for an emergency board meeting. I guess it is too- I guess it is too much to ask for the parents to come together to help support what is best for all of our students. So I will ask this. Please allow the kids that want and need to return to in-person learning the ability to do so as soon as possible without any further delays and develop a clear path to full-time in-person learning, so the students feel that there is hope in the future. Please continue to work diligently to provide the remote students the absolute best resources you can.
Thank you, Mr. Zalano. And next is Ms. Charlotte Hale Sullivan. Welcome, Ms. Hale Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Green and board members for listening to community concerns and pivoting to provide the new cohort plan for sixth to 12th graders. I feel this plan strikes the best balance between safety in schools and equitable access to our teachers for all students. Simply put, easing into our return to school buildings is a smart strategy, and keeping kids with their Red Clay teachers is a lot less disruptive to their educational progress. While I still have questions about implementation, I feel this plan is worthy of continued development. I hope you'll build upon it by providing our teachers who need it with staff support to effectively teach in-person and by Zoom simultaneously. I also still want to see the specifics on how my particular school will institute social distancing and other safety measures. If these and other lingering issues can be addressed in time for the start of the second marking period, then that's terrific. However, if you need more time to finish these refinements to the reopening plan, I urge you to take it. Either way, please keep the health and safety of our students, teachers, and staff at the forefront of your decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hale Sullivan. And next is Ms. Cecilia Cosencranius. Welcome, Ms. Cosencranius. You need to unmute yourself. There you go. Yep. Now you're on mute again.
Okay, there we go.
Yep.
Um, thank you. I have three kids in Red Clay, and I thank you all for this meeting and for giving the community a chance to ask questions and voice our concerns. I'd like to echo what Kelly Reed and some others said about staying home for another couple of months for the plan to be complete and concrete. Although my kids would absolutely love to get back to school in person, and I would too, I think that as a whole, we're not there. There's too many questions and details unanswered. The discussions we're having tonight are great, but they should have happened months ago. And I feel that this is, feels rushed. So my vote is to wait.
Thank you, Ms. Cosencranius. And next is Ms. Janine Clark. Welcome, Ms. Clark.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janine Clark, and I'm a third grader at Warner Elementary. I am also the treasurer for RCA. Last week, RCA conducted a survey of its members, and members were able to share all their concerns regarding the reopening. One of the many concerns were around the issues of safety, and we heard many of those issues tonight. Many members expressed concerns around the three feet versus six feet of social distancing, as well as the enforcement of mask wearing, especially at the elementary levels. With this being said, please reopen the schools only when it is safe to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next is Ms. Ezra Nikukar. Welcome.
Thank you. Hey now, I'm a junior at AI, and I feel we should keep with this current Zoom format until Delaware's numbers are improved, a more thought-out plan is created, which will come with more time to sync something over, and until we're at a more convenient time in the calendar year, because as people have been saying, it's flu season and all that. So with this, we need support for our mental health if we're staying on Zoom. Our mental health is already awful. We're teenagers, and those who aren't teenagers will have lasting effects from this. We're kids. We're supposed to be out socializing and everything, which is good for our mental health. Right now, we can't. We need this mental health support. People have already acclimated and gone into a routine with this Zoom thing. It's not ideal, but it's the safest and best solution we have at the moment. Going back is also extremely unfair to the teachers, custodians, and other school staff members also. Who wants to sign a waiver? A waiver is never necessary unless there's something that can go wrong. Thank you, and bambo boo.
Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Debbie Genoka. Welcome, Ms. Genoka.
Thank you for allowing me to have comments this evening. I'm a mother of a 16-year-old boy, and I really need him to go to school full-time, five days a week. I don't understand why on Wednesday we have activities and assignments. It is completely a waste of time for high school students. They don't even do any of those classes and completely avoid the computer, and we need to have the teachers teach on Wednesdays. Focus on academics. In addition, I need to know, are we saying the pledge of allegiance through our virtual as well as in-class? That's very important. We start a meeting every day. You know, in certain activities with the pledge of allegiance, as well as your board had your pledge allegiance. I don't know if.
Thank you, Ms. Genoka. Next is Ms. Michelle Johnson. Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
As a Red Clay parent and teacher, I want to go back to school when it is safe. I have just spent six weeks getting to know my students and beginning to learn and work together virtually. Now this will all change, and I won't even have the same students. According to the employee survey from Red Clay, I may not even be at the same school or teach the same content. Additionally, with the hybrid model, I will be doubling my workload. I have to have lesson plans for students online and in-person. In-person learning is beneficial because of the interaction students receive. But if we are safe, then very little interaction will occur. If a child has to sit at a desk behind a computer all day without moving, then what is the benefit of in-person instruction? I do not see how the risk is worth such little benefit. Additionally, in the hybrid model, I will be juggling zooming students while helping in-person students without being closer than three feet to them. This seems like a logistical nightmare. Kids that need help often need you to work closely with them. In my science classroom, students benefit most from participating in labs, but that cannot happen. I've been told I can only do demonstrations. Teachers and students will surely get sick and.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And next is Ms. Gina Small. Welcome, Ms. Small.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. First, I'd like to say I appreciate the hybrid option that was just recently added in response to all the parent input that you've been receiving. And also, Superintendent Green, I appreciated your presentation. I found it very helpful, along with all the comments and questions that it generated from some of the board members. However, I must echo some of the numerous earlier remarks that there are still too many important details up in the air and unanswered questions for this plan to be successfully implemented in the next two weeks. For the safety and well-being of both students and teachers, and to allow more time for teacher planning, please stay with the current Zoom environment until more of these details can be firmed up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Small. Next is Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Mr. Fackenthal.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary and vice president of the Red Clay Education Association. But tonight, I speak before you as a representative of the unified arts teams of our elementary schools, a group that has not been given enough of a voice in this reopening process. Our role is unique and requires specific consideration. Based on a survey of 52 unified arts teachers throughout our elementary schools, it is clear that most of our teachers are uncertain about and uncomfortable with current reopening plans. Lack of confidence with the school's plan to keep us safe and our students safe, uncondusive learning options for our areas, lack of resources and supports to teach effectively within the reopening guidelines, and a lack of preparedness for classes longer than 45 minutes. Whether we are teaching outside, not having necessary materials to accommodate teaching, or extending class time past 45 minutes when resources have been drastically reduced, we've been offered a dilemma instead of a solution. It is absolutely imperative we provide a safe, equitable, realistic.
Thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. And next is Ms. Mindy Rogers. Welcome, Ms. Rogers.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I am a parent of a six-year-old, a beautiful, little, curious six-year-old that last year at the beginning of her kindergarten year couldn't wait to learn, did wonderful in school, loved her teacher, loved learning, wanted to do more even in times off. Now I'm the parent of an angry, confused, depressed student, and I refuse to be bullied by the people, not only on here, but in our community that make me feel like wanting to make the best choice for my child's education is wrong. I'm sorry that the teachers aren't prepared, but that's not my child's fault. She needs to be in school. I, I don't care if it's three feet or six feet. I fully trust in Cook's ability to make the best options available for my kid and for her teachers. Please put them back in.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. And next is Ms. Jennifer Furman. Welcome, Ms. Furman.
Thank you to the board and administration for listening to the community's concerns. We all want what is best for our children, but we all have different opinions on what that is. You are tasked with the impossible decision of choosing what our reopening will look like, but it is one that should be made with our children's health in mind and with science as our guide. As a kindergarten teacher, I have many concerns about what our day will look like with no shared materials, no cooperative play, no flexible seating, students stuck in chairs, and mask-wearing for seven-plus hours per day. This will be incredibly difficult for children to keep students safe and adhere to CDC guidelines. With the district's plan changing every few days to address a new concern, one thing is evidently clear. We need more time, and we need a better plan for our elementary schools, one that can help us safely accommodate the number of students that want to be in the building in a way that is sustainable. Please task our district with devising a plan that helps to reduce our classroom numbers, allowing us to be socially distant and to adhere to CDC guidelines. While we want our students back, we want them back in a way that ensures helps.
Thank you, Ms. Furman. And next is Ms. Nora Reese. Welcome, Ms. Reese.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, you have absolutely no idea how important the students' point of view is on this situation. All things considered, we're the ones whose future is being manipulated to an astronomical extreme. If we, who need to stay at home, like, don't get what we deserve education. High school freshmen haven't even experienced the taste of the fresh fruit of a new star walking in those doors. You have no idea how many people I know with an abundant, promising future that have just dropped out on this giving up. Wow, yeah, and giving up on this scum. That's exactly what it is, too. It's scum. Our teachers have been so considerate, giving us extra feedback, giving us something to really work for. And for those of us who need to stay and, like, succeed with an online option, where would our source of motivation go? After all, you are the one who put us through this. Why are you relying on us students to maintain some sort of degree of mental stability? How dare you gaslight our mental health and then attempt to kiss the boo-boo that is our shredded, mangled brains and options of counselors and outside resources? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Next is Ms. Patricia Dallas. Welcome, Ms. Dallas.
Evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Tricia Dallas, and I'm a teacher with the early years program. Our preschool staff can make just about anything happen. We can take rocket ships into outer space, and we can stomp with dinosaurs. When the due date of the parent's survey was changed to October 9th, it meant that our preschool staff had just one week to reorganize staff and classes, work to integrate reopening guidelines, and prepare in-person instruction materials, all while continuing to teach remotely on most days. Our panda pack can do a lot of things, but this has been a very big lift. Our teachers can't wait to see the kids again and worry about doing things properly. This is a group with high standards for their work with the very small children they teach. We are grateful for the very helpful staff meeting we had this afternoon to answer questions and to district administrators who met after school today to discuss reopening. Please accept this well wish from me as you determine how to move forward, and please join me in a wish for the preschool family who will continue to strive to have children walking with dinosaurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dallas. And next is Ms. Holly Gully. Welcome, Ms. Gully.
Thank you, Kathy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the staff and administrators at Red Clay. This is not an easy time for anyone, and I really appreciate your hard work. And also, thank you to the school board members for their time. I very much appreciate the variety of choices that Red Clay has for families regarding the return to school. Although personally, I would have sent my kids back full-time, and I would have felt safe doing so. It seems there is an option for everyone. Please do not delay the start of in-person learning. Finally, I want to reassure the staff members that are apprehensive about the return to school. I, too, was nervous about returning to work. I am a certified registered nurse and estheticist. I put people to sleep. I love being back at work, and I feel safe. And most of the staff at the largest hospital in Delaware wear just a simple Level 3 mask. I know the return to school will be different and challenging, but if the state can have bars, restaurants, malls, and casinos open, then our kids should certainly be in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gully. And next is Ms. Deanna Bilecki. Welcome, Ms. Bilecki.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Does it, does an Olympic athlete wait to prepare for the event 30 days from the Olympics? Do ambulance crews wait for the 911 call to prepare for a response? It feels like this to so many in our Red Clay community. It feels as though the DOE and the district has waited for a Phase 2 announcement to plan, even with the pandemic looming over us since March. The district's mantra, "Safety first in education", it is both perplexing and vexing why the district would choose a hybrid model, which could compromise both district priorities. The current full-day model has many limitations, such as no carpet time, group time, socialization among students. This model would break apart current classes. Wouldn't it make better sense to give everyone a better experience with a morning and afternoon school session for the next six weeks? Class sizes could be maintained because of social distancing. I highly encourage the district to seek other alternatives.
Thank you, Ms. Bilecki. Next is Mr. Corey Budaschak. Welcome, Mr. Budaschak. You need to unmute.
Yep. Hi, everybody. I just want to thank Mr. Green for all the choices and all the district employees for all of their hard work. I know how hard it can be planning for non-eventualities and all these things, as I work for a university and have done the same thing in the higher ed district. But what I really want to talk about today is equity. This hasn't been touched on a lot, not equality, but equity. We're lucky enough, my wife and I, to stay at home with our kids. We are lucky that we can supervise the remote learning. Many do not have these options. We have nurses. We have people that are home health aides. We have other people that need to go to work and actually go to work. They need to be thought of in this process, and this is why we need to open schools. We need to take this pandemic seriously and do it safely, but we need to open schools with that equity in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Budaschak. And next is Mr. Robert Snowden. Welcome, Mr. Snowden. And you need to unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Appreciate all the administration's efforts to modify the online class options. But I think we need to take a step back and look at the overall purpose for Phase 2. And the idea there was for the pandemic, as the cases and hospitalizations were trending down. Currently, nationally and locally, we are trending up. I think we need to protect or take all the steps we need to protect our children, our extended families, and our beloved teachers. And it seems to me that we need to take a little extra time to make sure all these plans are working and functional and all the bugs worked out, and I think it's just.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden. Next is Mr. John Chancy. Welcome, Mr. Chancy.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay?
We can.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Chancy. Time is short, so I will speak quickly. As school numbers come in and capacity is calculated, we are seeing 23-plus students allowed in rooms, which is what you just articulated. Most elementary schools are using three-feet distancing in eating lunch in classrooms. There has been no transparency to what the details are to make us feel that this plan will go far. Masked off with kids eating, kids talking, and kids being kids at three-feet distancing is not a distancing plan. Don't get me wrong. I want kids back in school, and I want to teach in-person, but shouldn't we test the waters and make our minimum six feet and then pass with flying colors and then build up with shorter distances and then higher numbers? We need to start slow and smart and build up confidence so we can see kids staying in schools. Lastly, mental health is a serious concern, but two days in class to start is better than going too fast and then having none. Like I said before, start slow and smart. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chancy. Next, Ms. Kelsey Shahean. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
I'm Kelsey Shahean, an eighth grader at Tanya Middle School. I want to thank you for listening to the comments and adjusting the Phase 2 plan. Although the Phase 2 plan has been changed, there are still uncertainties. My, many families and students will have questions and concerns that need to be addressed. I myself need answers and more clarification in order to decide my next steps. Safety is a priority to my family, and I need to know now that in-person is cut in half. We will be more spread out in the class and cafeteria, providing a safer environment. One of my other concerns is being able to have a social classroom interaction over online Zoom learning. If we stay fully on Zoom, will it be with random Red Clay teachers and students? If we stay fully on Zoom, will it be with random Red Clay teachers and students? Also, if we are only in the school two times a week and on Zoom the other two days, what is stopping fully Zoom students from joining the Zoom already going on in the class? Those are a few concerns and questions I have. I hope to get more clarification for tonight. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. And the next person is Gretchen Shayhan. I don't know if she's using the same computer as Kelsey. Maria?
They are.
Okay, so Gretchen, Ms. Gretchen Shayhan, can you unmute? Ms. Shayhan?
Yes, good evening. We all know, we all know that you won't please everyone and I am continually reminding myself to extend grace in these unprecedented times. With that said, why does this have to be full steam ahead? Why not keep working toward our long-term goal of all students back in school through measurable steps? Step one was high school sports. Next up, October 19th for the small group from Meadowwood Autism Support, et cetera. What if the district would consider tackling elementary next and focus their energies on getting over the upcoming challenges on a microcosm scale with transportation, some transitions with the building, et cetera? As the district learns from this level, they can move forward at beginning of marking period three to add middle school, high school levels when they are naturally transitioning between semesters. Please provide a safe and equitable learn.
Thank you, Ms. Shayhan. And next is Mr. Fei Zi. Welcome, Mr. Zi.
Good evening. This is Fei Xie. Thank you, everyone, for staying up so late to talk about and hear about this important issue. Obviously, this is a very difficult situation for all of us to handle. Unfortunately, I think we all recognize there's no perfect solution to this amid the ongoing global pandemic. I feel very encouraged that the school district has worked hard to provide three options for families with different preferences than these. Understand that the, you know, various concerns expressed by many parents and the teachers about returning to school. Well, there's no question that there's risk involved in this option. But ultimately, I feel that this is a risk or reward trade-off decision that every family needs to make, you know, individually. So I'm hoping is that the district will preserve the return to school option for those families and the students who value in-person instructions more. And in doing so, I'm hoping that the school district will take all the necessary measures to keep faculty, students, and.
Thank you, Mr. Zi. Next is Ms. Kaia Tanya John. Welcome, Ms. John. And you do need to unmute yourself, Ms. John. Ms. John, can you unmute yourself? Hello, Ms. John. Can you unmute yourself? I guess not. Let's bring, bring Ms. John back and we'll go to Ms. Kelly Brown. Welcome, Ms. Brown. And you do need to unmute yourself, Ms. Brown.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Green, for your tireless hours at configuring a plan for a safe return to in-person learning. I have to disagree that none of this is rushed since we've known about this since March. I also feel that healthcare workers shouldn't have to choose between careers and family either. I worked full-time in a hospital providing direct patient care with no social distancing since the beginning of COVID. My entire family has stayed healthy and well. I don't have the option to stay home and still get paid. And therefore, I don't have the means to care for and help teach my fourth, third, and first grader. My children are already behind from not learning any new material in the spring. And they certainly are not receiving the education they need or deserve. They miss their friends and teachers and they are longing to go back to school. Please allow these children to go back to school full-time if they so choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And Ms. John, I see you there, so you're up, okay?
Hi, thank you, everyone, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I personally am desperate in need of the school to reopen. My son, there are people on this Zoom call right now that knew my son when he was multiple grades behind. He has done the work. He has grown tremendously. And now he is not only on grade level after being three grades behind level, but he is in honors classes. But this Zoom has crushed him. Not being in school has crushed my child where I have to seek out help for him to get psychological help because he's waking up saying, I don't want to live anymore. I can't do this. He gets off his Zoom and he's depressed and not responded and not eating. I am begging you. I need my baby in school. He needs to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. John. Next is Amy Ellenich. Welcome, Ms. Ellenich.
Hi, I was just, I have more of a question. It's whether or not I'm able to homeschool my children with the curriculum provided by the school and whether or not that will count towards their grades and whether or not that's an option. And as a side note, as I've sat through this entire thing, just to the way that you're muting people's mics and the time limit you've put on people and all of that is really showing how much you're listening and how much you're caring. I think that maybe the superintendent is listening and caring a bit more, but the school board is not. And that's really disappointing to see and hear. So with that, thank you to everybody who's stuck through this long. Thank you to all the work you're doing and I hope we can all get through this.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenich. And last but not least is Ms. Kathleen Llewellyn. Welcome, Ms. Llewellyn. And you do need to unmute your mic. Ms. Llewellyn, can you unmute your mic? Two, Kathleen Llewellyn. There we go.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, you know, after listening to everybody, um, tonight, I was really thrilled and excited and I still am about the, the last change up with the two days on and then the two days on Zoom. My child thankfully is thriving with Zoom. For the first time, he's excelling and he's excited about school. But he does need the socialization. I've heard from many parents, angry, happy. I've heard from the board. And now tonight is my first I'm hearing from teachers. They're the ones that need to be listened to because they're the ones implementing the plan that you are putting in place. If they don't know it, they can't implement it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Llewellyn. Okay, and my understanding is that concludes public comment for tonight. So we move on to the action item. So it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the reopening of schools as per the phase two plan. Is there a motion?
I move to vote on the reopening of schools as outlined in phase two.
So you're making the motion, Ashley?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper seconds. Discussion.
I would just like to thank Darrell and the entire team for all of the tireless hours. And this is not a perfect solution by any means, because there is no such perfect solution in these crazy times. But I just think it's, you know, they're listening to the needs of the various needs of the students and the parents and the community. I think they've done a nice job in putting together something that can, can work for, you know, making, making this a little bit easier on some of the kids in many ways. So thank you guys for everything that you've been doing and it's just, there is no perfect solution. But, but I think this is about as good as it's going to get for right now in the current situation. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Ah, yeah. This is Dr. Newton. I want to thank Darrell and his team for all of their hard work. This plan gives everyone an option. It's the best that I think we can do. But I still think that there are going to be a number of people that are unhappy. It doesn't matter which way we vote. It's, it's just going to make people upset. And we have to figure out a way to move forward for those that are upset, for those that are not upset. Some of us tell us that we must not rush, that many of us say that we've waited far too long, and yet we have to make a decision. I do not know, nor does anyone else here, what the absolute right answer is, but I do know that we have to choose and we have to choose tonight. I get the arguments on all the sides. I have a 17-year-old struggling with Zoom, wanting to go back to school but worried that he will catch COVID and infect his family. I teach on Zoom and I also do Zoom Plus in person and I share the teacher's health concerns. None of us is responsible for creating this COVID pandemic, yet we all have to deal with the effects. And part of what we're hearing tonight is the stress on our entire country. We're going to do our best and like the other school districts, we don't have a choice that includes guarantees. The current menu of choices is, like I said, by no means perfect. But it will inevitably change our circumstances. As it changes, then we're going to have to change. My grandson will be returning to school and many of my former students who are now teachers will be struggling in their classes. We will never be completely ready and yet we cannot wait forever. I will vote to support this proposal, not because I'm in love with it, but because it does allow our parents to keep their children home if they choose to do so or to participate in a limited return to school with the best social distancing we can reasonably offer. I know that it's not possible to satisfy all interests, but I will vote in favor of this proposal because in my personal and professional opinion, it's the best choice available to us right at this moment. And that's all we can do.
I'd like to thank Superintendent Green and the entire Red Clay team for their hard work in continuing to adjust the phase two reopening plans to provide choices that accommodate the needs and concerns of our district communities.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I'll jump in and make a few remarks. First of all, I would like to say that I think a lot of people put a lot of work into creating the various plans that we have seen over the last few weeks, the last few months. And I do appreciate the effort on all parts, on the part of the superintendent, the district, and also our families. There were lots of different perspectives and I agree with Dr. Newton. I mean, I really can understand all of the different perspectives.
I think what resonated with me quite loudly over the last few days were the number of emails we received from educators in our schools, especially our elementary school educators. And then we were provided with the results from the, our CEA survey. And I think Ms. Furco talked about that earlier where she said that I think there were 606 respondents. And there were three questions I just really wanted to highlight. So these were questions asked of Red Clay educators over the last few days. So it's very, very recent data. One question was, are you comfortable with returning to in-person instruction on October 19th and November 2nd? 70.3% of Red Clay educators said no. I am a mother and I have children in Red Clay schools and I value, appreciate, and respect the work our educators do. If 70% of our educators, that means seven out of 10, that means the majority of all teachers, all educators in every single building are saying they are not comfortable returning to work, I have to take that very seriously because without our educators, our students will not get educated. Administrators do great work, but they're not in the classrooms educating, right? The other question was, do you feel the necessary improvements have been made in your building to allow for a safe return? 57.8% of Red Clay educators in the last few days responded no, with another 21.5% saying, quote, "I have not been informed of any changes in my building," end quote. Again, very significant numbers from educators in our districts. So the environment that students learn in, and this is not my phrase, the environment students learn in are teachers and educators' working conditions. So if educators are not feeling comfortable, we have to consider the impact that that will have on all of us. Another question was whether or not educators were interested in COVID testing and whether they wanted students tested. 89.1% of our educators said they wanted students tested before they came into the classroom. So other students wouldn't be infected and so they wouldn't be infected. I think these are very strong numbers that really should have us as a district and a board consider what we are doing. And if educators don't feel comfortable, then I don't know how as a community we can feel comfortable. And I say that as a mother, as someone who loves nothing in life more than my children. I have a 14-year-old and a 17-year-old. And I am not comfortable sending my kids back into a classroom when they're teachers. People that I love, people that I've known in this district for over a decade are calling, they're sending pictures of their classrooms, they're writing letters. We are getting many letters from entire teams in our elementary schools. And they're saying we are not comfortable coming back. The other thing a lot of educators are saying is they're not receiving any responses from board members to their emails. So I think we need to do a better job of listening to our community and I think we need to really appreciate what our educators are saying about them not feeling comfortable returning to the classroom. Thank you. And I want to thank all the educators and all the custodians and all the food service workers, everyone in our district who often do not get recognized because people are still in our schools doing a lot of work. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone who is in our schools working.
I just wanted to take a second and say thanks to Darrell and the administrators in the district that have worked on the plan for listening to parents. I was pleased to hear about the PPE that's provided for the district. I've worked in healthcare throughout this whole pandemic. And right now, some of the Red Clay schools are going to have more PPE than my, my jobs had when we were in the midst of it, working with active COVID patients. So from that perspective, it shows that Red Clay is working hard to protect their educators. I understand the concerns and fears of educators and families as well. It wasn't ideal working in an environment in healthcare with COVID patients when we may not have had the proper PPE, but it was my duty to take care of the patients. And it's our duty as a school district to educate students. And while, if it's more communication that's needed to make people feel more comfortable or if there are certain things that we might be able to add, that's one thing. But I think that tonight in the presentation, Darrell has explained a lot of different things that the district has been doing to make a safe environment. And as I said, having worked in healthcare without a majority of the things that Red Clay is doing to provide for their educators and their staff, I applaud the district and I commend them for their hard work to ensure that students, educators, and all staff are safe. And I just thank you for your hard work.
Okay, I'll jump in at this point as well. I also appreciate all the work that's going on in the district and I've seen it firsthand. I have responded to each and every one of the 255 emails that this board has received and I've copied in the entire board on each and every one of my responses. I note that Mr. Fackenthal at 8:30 tonight sent the teacher survey, so I have not been able to review it. But based on what he said, it sounded like. But based on what he said, it sounded like about half of the teachers responded, about 600 of our 1,200 teacher educator workforce. So I will review it, but I haven't had a chance to because I've been running this meeting. I will note that over, while we've been dealing with this, we surveyed our parents and community. And even at the get-go, 60% of our parents wanted an in-person option. Of course, the governor and the state has us in yellow, which permits an in-person option and is really kind of forcing us to do that and pointing out to everyone when people ask about an in-person option to go to their local school district. So we've been doing that. Then, when the options came out for parents, about 70% chose the in-person option in school. I absolutely value each and every one of our teachers. My daughter is a teacher. I highly, my in-laws were teachers. I have a long line of teachers in my families. I know it's a wonderful profession, and I value them. I also value the parents in our community and all of our community. I value almost 17,000 students, all of the parents and guardians, all of the 2,300, 2,400 staff. Everyone. Value all of them. But I think based on all of the results, what we need to do, we are the choice district. I have always supported choice and believe that even in this pandemic, that it's parents, guardians, and students who are the ones that are able to make a reasonable choice for what works for them. And parents know what the facts are, guardians know what they are, children know what they are, and they can make their choice. So we have two good remote options and an in-person option. We are in compliance with all DPH guidance. My view is that DPH has the responsibility, accountability, and knowledge to develop health guidance. We must follow it, and as we've noted, masks are required for all. I will note that private and parochial schools, and parochial schools are not high-priced schools, have been back in school in September without incident, and all districts are going back soon. Our parents, our students want this. We've heard from our community. I firmly believe that we've developed reasonable plans, and then our parents, guardians, and students get to choose what works for them and their families. We have great options with appropriate and mandated DPH guidance. I cannot agree to permit some to take the choice away from others. I support the plan.
Kathy, I did want to say one other thing I forgot, and that was just along the lines of I hear the teachers' concerns about wishing that students could be tested and having those results before kids come to school. And I understand the concern. I'd love to be able to know that people I interact on a day-to-day basis do or do not have COVID when I interact with them. But that's a luxury that we can't have, and as a district, we can't mandate that a family has their child do something health-wise. We can't mandate that they get a flu shot. We can't even mandate that they get some childhood vaccinations. So in the same regard, even if we would like it and it would help people feel more safe or more comfortable, we can't mandate that parents take their child to have a test, especially considering it's an invasive test. And that's their prerogative in terms of how they parent their child.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Maria will have a roll call vote on the motion. And again, the motion that's been made and seconded is approving the reopening of schools per the Phase Two plan.
Dr. Blom?
No, thank you.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
That's five yes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you. And now I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there, moved by Ms. Sabo. Is there a second?
So second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for all the district has done. Thank you, Maria and Tony, for helping us stay on track during the meeting as well.
Thank you and good night.
Good night, everyone.